If I could have your attention, please. We will get started with the August Georgetown Scott County Planning and Zoning Meeting. We've had some more to show up. If you plan on speaking, please sign in in the break room over here behind the gentleman with the mustard-colored shirt there. He'll get out of your way, I'm sure. It really makes it difficult in the middle of the meeting if someone says, "I wasn't planning on speaking," and we have to stop and sign you in and swear you in and all that stuff. So if you have any intention whatsoever of speaking, please go ahead and sign in. We have a lot of people here tonight, and our bylaws say that we can limit presentations to four minutes, and so that's what we're going to do. So be concise in what you have to say. And if someone says there's not a left-turn lane, there's no need repeating that six or eight times so that we can get everyone that does have something to say. We want everyone to have the opportunity. So we will get underway here. The first item of business is approval of the July invoices. I have a motion to approve those, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
All right, I have a motion and a second to approve July invoices. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. And I think I accidentally said minutes, but I made invoices.
Okay. Well, then we'll go next then. Approval of the July 10th minutes.
I'll make a motion.
You do that, and that way.
Be consistent.
That's right.
I'll second that one.
I have a second by Mr. Stone. I have a motion and a second to approve the July minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And I need a motion to approve the August agenda that we have before you.
Make a motion to approve the agenda of August 14th.
I have a motion and a second. Second by Mr. Vest. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Do we have any items for postponement or withdrawal that are not listed on our agenda?
Can you give us one second? We're just trying to adjust with the amount of people during the having issues with the laptop feedback, so.
All right.
If you give us like one second, we'll transition to it.
While we're waiting on that, let me just ask, are there any items that are eligible for consent?
There are no consent items at this time. Red, will you progress it to the items postponement? Thank you. All right, this is the list of the items for postponement. So hopefully, any of them have been advertised or anything like that.
Right, okay. Well, North Hampton Street was in the state, Blossom Park were already listed there. Are you all not picking up a feed?
I mean, I'm looking at red to see if you would go.
All right, before we start on the first item of business, I'm going to ask Mr. Perkins to swear everyone in, please.
If everyone signed in to speak, if you could stand and raise your right hand, please. Do you swear affirm the statement you make tonight to be the truth to the best of your information and belief? Thank you all.
All right, thank you. So the first item of business tonight is PDP 2025-13, the legacy-run Commerce Park. It's a preliminary development plan for 2.25 million square feet of building area across several buildings with associated parking and landscaping located at 892 Della Plain Road and Old Della Plain Road.
All right. Red, can you see me?
Thank you.
Okay, as stated, this is a preliminary development plan for 2.25 million square feet of building under roof across several buildings located at the property address 892 Della Plain Road and also off of Della Plain Road. Presently, it is under two parcels. If this were to be approved, we would need a consolidation plat to get them into one. The total site acreage is 160 acres, existing zone being I-1 with surrounding zones of A-1, B-2, or BP-1 and I-1. They're proposing a manufacturing and industrial user with some warehousing components as well. Three roads would be accessed as part of this project, all of which ultimately lead to Cherry Blossom Way, and there are two variances and waivers associated with the project. All right, this is the project site here. I'll go into a little bit more detail further, but you can kind of see the general vicinity, Toyota to the south, the Business Park to the southeast, and then to the west being Industry Road specifically.
Can you go back to that? I'm sorry. So, red.
Yes, the area in red is the property in question.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. We'll proceed. And this is the zoning map, so you can see this is kind of on that northern edge of the urban services boundary, which is not illustrated. However, the hatched outline is illustrated, and that is city limits. If we'll go to the next slide, and one more. Okay. So this property was rezoned and annexed into the City of Georgetown in 1991. It was formerly identified as the Ramsey Ward property, and with their annexation and rezoning, the owner at the time and the planning commission of the city, or the planning commission more specifically, not the city, entered into a certificate of land use restriction. It is a mechanism of recording land use restrictions that are kind of tied to a deed. It's a state-available thing. We use them at times, but it's just an option available to kind of establish conditions or establish requirements outside of a zoning ordinance or a zoning regulation regarding site design and layout and everything like that. They kind of broke it up into three different parts: general conditions, preliminary development plans, and final subdivision flats and development plans. We'll go to the next one. So this is just a summary of everything. It is rather long, and it is, I believe, potentially summarized in more detail in the staff report, but it outlines nine general conditions, four of which are not applicable because this did not go to the ESLI zone. It's an environmentally sensitive light industry zone, but the first four are the ones that are kind of the most interesting, I will call them. And we will have the two that are starred, the buffering and open-use strip and the tree preservation along the south boundary, is those that are kind of the most imperative that we look into. Preliminary development plan also considered several items, including sewer availability components, that type of thing, open space easements, access management, and then the next part was just talking about their plans for implementation as well as their annexation requirement. So this is our proposed building layout for the property. If you go to the next slide, I have highlighted the buildings in question across the property. There are eight that were submitted at time of corrections outline. I will note that in future slides, there will be some amendments to it. Thank you for, I appreciate the future reference, but it's not quite there yet. There are some amendments to some of the layouts based off of staff feedback, but because a lot of our documents were using this corrections version of the plans, and they had all the grading and all the landscaping, felt the most appropriate to utilize this one when we're talking about the property. Again, in total, there's 160-some acres on property, and there's 2.25 million square feet of building under roof, or equivalent to 51 acres. Total lot coverage would ultimately end up being 32.07 percent, with the largest building measuring about half of a million square feet and the smallest building measuring about 33,000 square feet. In total, they are also proposing over 400,000 square feet of vehicle use area, which includes parking lots, storage areas, loading docks, as well as any road connections. They propose 1,298 parking spaces, 419 truck parking spaces, and estimate that the maximum shift at any point would have about 1,900 to 2,000 individuals on staff. You'll proceed. I did break it up into a little bit more detail if we ended up needing to reference any of these. Building A is the largest building, and then Buildings H and I were the smallest ones on this property, and you could see kind of the distribution of parking spaces and everything like that. We'll continue through here, and we'll just pass through this one. So when we're looking at buildings, we want to ensure that they're in compliance with our zoning setback standards, height, area, and everything like that. At this point in time, the exact final height of the buildings is to be determined. I think it is a user-specific item, but the applicant can correct me. But the maximum height for the zone is 100, or not 100, is 75 feet in height, which the applicant has stated all buildings on this property would be under that 75-foot maximum height. Setbacks for the I-1 zone are 50 feet from the front and zero from the side and rear unless adjoining a residential district or zone, in which that would be a 50-foot setback from those areas, just to kind of have that natural buffering separation between a more heavy-intensity user and a residential component much more lower-intensity activities on the property. I kind of, please go back, thank you. I've used this slide here to kind of highlight with different colors the different areas of the setbacks. So along the boundary shared against Industry Road, which is that west side, or your guys' left side, that is the building setback, that is a zero-lot line, which is the industry standard. And then along all the other areas, there is deviation. In the previous slides, I mentioned the CLURs, the Certificate of Land Use Restrictions, and along the north and east boundaries, that included an additional setback area. So instead of the standard 50 feet that you would see from property lines, you're looking at 150 feet, and that can be shown as the orange item there. So they're kind of layered into two parts. In between the property line and that buffer or that additional setback area is an open-space buffer measuring 50 feet wide along that north and east boundary line, and that is shown in green. The commissioners, you also do have a, if you are squinting at the board, I have them, hopefully they print it in color, but I have your guys' copies of the slides should you have any questions about it or want to flag anything for a future discussion. Along the south side, I just wanted to call out the standard building setback line of 50 feet, as well as the second CLUR that we're talking about, which stipulated that existing tree rows around the property perimeter shall be preserved, including those along Old Della Plain Road. So that would be that south boundary area, and that is an item that we can get into a little bit of further detail on. While we're at this slide, I will continue more with the setback variances that they've requested. Specifically, they've requested two kind of sets of variances, and I'm going to read over them right here. At the time that corrections were submitted, they showed two buildings which are in violation of the property line. They've since removed those buildings in later plans, which you guys can see in the new 11-by-17s that I gave you. So these buildings were in violation, and they are no longer in violation because they are no longer buildings proposed on the site. And then I'm going to read over everybody again. There's another variance requested to the 150 setback requirement from Anderson Road, from Building G and Building X. Again, they've kind of reflected that amendment to the setbacks, so they would not be needing their setback variance. But at the time, again, I wanted to illustrate that they had, we have been working with the applicant, identifying that we want to keep that compliance with the CLURs that have been recorded ongoing, and they have updated their plans to reflect that. So at this point in time, the variance is not necessitated because there is no intrusion into that 150 setback. All right, we'll go to the next slide. So at workshop on Monday, we discussed with the applicant their plan for phasing. At the time, it was unclear to staff where that line was being drawn, and the applicant has graciously provided us with a new phasing plan, which you guys will see in an 11-by-17 as well. And the phasing line is proposed to follow this route here, so all the areas highlighted in red is considered Phase 1, so a connection onto Industry Road, we're going to join a property owner, cutting across the northern boundary of the property, kind of following the property lines, and then filling up this area most nearest to Anderson Road, with later plans to work on Phase 2, which would be closer to Industry Road. So they'll be starting in the east, at least at this point. They'll be starting in the east and proceeding to the west as users become available, as infrastructure is put in. Also on this plan is Crane Town Lane. If you'll proceed. Crane Town Lane is a dirt road that has been recorded on several easements and flats over the years, and it is currently serving a property owner to the north. That property is completely landlocked, so this is their primary ingress egress from their project site. You can see through the picture, as well as just kind of the area around it. It's pretty wooded in this area, and so we're just trying to figure out what we're going to do with that one. At this point in time, if you'll go back a slide, the Crane Town Lane is currently kind of going between several buildings and loading docks and parking areas. So the plan shows, at least at some point, an idea that they would be dissolving it, working with the property owner to dissolve that easement and establishing a new route forward. Staff would not endorse a plan that does not have an idea for how they're going to keep that access for that property owner to the north, and it is a private matter to determine what that route will be through the property, whether there will be specific easements or other arrangements made so that that owner can continue to have their access to their property. And we recommend conditioning the preliminary development plan approval on a route being found and defined when they approach that Crane Town Lane area. You'll go back again to that slide. Phase 1 will have some impact on that northern portion of Crane Town Lane, where that road kind of bends down and then follows that northern property line, but as a whole, a majority of the construction in Phase 1 will not be impacting that lane at this point. So the applicant and staff will work together to determine when that easement needs to come into play to ensure that that owner has guaranteed route to their property. Again, the route layout is up to the two owners to kind of decide how they're going to work all that out, but we can confirm that there is a plan to kind of not impact that lane in the very beginning, and we have conditioned that they would be, work with the owner to ensure that they could have access to their property. All right, we'll continue, and we'll continue here.
Let me ask you a real quick question. Does that Crane Town Lane only affect one property owner?
It affects several properties, but they are all held by the same individual.
Okay.
I believe they're, and the owner of the properties to the north is here. I believe there are six or so parcels?
Yes, there's four different tracks.
Okay, four different tracks.
But all in the same family. Okay, thank you.
So under their current planned proposal, you can see kind of the red and then the kind of purple line, so the options, at least under current plan, is to have them travel up Industry Road potentially, or kind of go through the middle of the property. Of course, as this is not impacting them in the very beginning, it's not something we need to worry about it, but we do need to make sure that we have a plan going forward, but it's not an immediate pressing need. We'll continue. So this map here illustrates the existing road network in blue and the proposed road network in purple, as well as the routes to get to the various parking areas for trailers and passenger vehicles. The red is just the property line for everybody's continued reference there. This property spans two roads and has potential access to another public road. You'll continue to the next slide there. So they propose two driveways on Anderson Road. It's a county-maintained road measuring 18 feet in width with a 25 mile-an-hour speed limit. Della Plain Road is a city-maintained road with a 25 mile-an-hour speed limit and 24 feet wide in most locations, and they propose one access point to that road. And then Industry Road, at least on their preliminary first version of their plan, they showed two connections: one to kind of arch around the property to the north and go through an easement, and then the other to kind of go through another property through another easement to connect closer to the intersection of Industry Road and Cherry Blossom Way. These roads, especially Anderson Road, do need improvements. There are standards that we have set forth for industrial road standards, and to ensure that the roads can handle the additional traffic or the additional pressure and the additional weight that comes with having heavy traffic on it, comes with having an employer versus just a farm operator on a property. And we will, through condition and through review of the plans, ensure that those roads are built to the proper standards to handle that weight for the potential continued use of both this user and other users going forward. They also show several internal roads, which the internal roads not serving parking lots are, at least as stated by the applicant, are intended to be built to city standards for the potential adoption into the city road network. As always, the city is the jurisdiction that would determine if they're going to adopt a road. It is a risk that an applicant would take to build a road to the city standard and then hope that the city would adopt it. They don't have to take it if they don't, if the city determines that that is not something they're interested in at that time. All right, we'll continue. They also propose a realignment of Della Plain Road. So Della Plain, as it stands, follows this loop curve, traveling from west to east, and then curving into Cherry Blossom Way, right where Cherry Blossom has their kind of right turn to travel from traveling east to traveling south. The applicant proposes a realignment, so bringing this road up further into this property, having a four-way intersection here, and then having this kind of connect through a Moore Street shop with Moore's face for queuing of vehicles directly into that existing intersection. Cherry Blossom is a state-maintained road. Della Plain is a city-maintained road, and we're reviewing the development plan process. So we will be involved with and would be conditioning that the applicant be involved with our office, the city office, as well as KYTC, to ensure that everything is built to the proper specifications for that road project. I believe road right-of-way will need to be dedicated, a decommissioning plan, a commissioning plan will have to be in order in order to proceed with this realignment project as shown on this plan. Goodness, all right. A traffic study was submitted as part of this project. As after review, staff determined that this is highly likely to exceed the number of trips which require a traffic study be submitted. On this graphic here, you can see eight dots identifying the various intersections where the traffic engineer reviewed the traffic rates and the performance of all these intersections. If you'll proceed. But before I get to the performance of those intersections, this is the trip generation by phase. So Phase 1 is anticipated to have a build-out of 2026 and proposes 1.3 million square feet of building area. And if you consider the accepted ratios for the number of trips generated for different land users, you would anticipate in total, across manufacturing and warehousing uses, 483 trips in the morning and 522 trips in the afternoon. It is a peak hour window, and I believe the traffic engineer or an engineer that was representing the applicant is here if you have specific questions on how that metric was determined. Phase 2, if it was just evaluated on its own, is expected to bring 920,000 square feet of building area. That has an expected completion date of around 2036. And on that phase alone, so the portion that would be kind of on the west side of that proposed road, is anticipated to generate 436 trips in the morning and 472 trips in the afternoon if it is on its own. In total, across the 2,250,000 square feet, you would anticipate that morning trips generated on the site would be 919, and afternoon trips would be generated at 994. So this greatly exceeds the value that triggers the traffic study, hence why we've requested it. If you'll proceed to the next slide. They did an intersection performance analysis to determine how the level of service would be impacted if this was developed in their respective build years. This image here depicts the performance of the roads, and if it is in green, it means that the intersection did not perform less than a level of service C, which is considered a moderate delay. I have to look at the study, but it has a moderate delay in clearing an intersection. And those areas in red are those areas which would perform at less than a level of service D, so we're thinking DEF if you're thinking of the traditional teaching and grading system. You'll proceed forward. This chart illustrates those turning movements that would have that decrease in movement ability. Most of the intersections are signalized, specifically Enterprise and Outer Ring and Sims Pike, and those areas are already kind of, especially at Enterprise Way and Cherry Blossom, they're already performing at a less-than-a-level-of-service-D clearing rate. But it does show that the, or the study does indicate that existing delays identified that that intersection would not worsen with the additional traffic outside of the conditions they're already seeing. The intersection of Cherry Blossom and Della Plain will also see some impact, specifically for those left-turning movements in the morning and afternoon. And the intersection of Cherry Blossom at Sims Pike would also see some decrease in intersection clearing, but it would be a decrease of about 10 seconds. So as opposed to kind of having that kind of left-turn option and having that momentum going east and west, they have to kind of wait a little bit more before they can make that left turn to go north towards Sims Pike. The study identifies that the build-with-improvements infrastructure that they would be pursuing to get their level of services to improve would be the conversion of Cherry Blossom Way at Della Plain Road from a yielded stop to an intersection. I will get into the signal warranted in a minute, but they are looking to kind of slow down that intersection to allow for those users on Della Plain Road to turn out of the neighborhood or turn off the road. In addition to, for those users who are making that left turn and wanting to get onto Della Plain Road, they would be able to have that movement in a more guarded and safe way. The study also identifies adding an eastbound left-turn lane from Della Plain onto the project site. So once you're on Della Plain Road, having that option to slow down and make your left turn, as opposed to having to slow down all traffic while you're waiting for westbound traffic to come in and clear, so you can make an appropriate turn. We'll continue. 2036 was also their full build-out year for all of their phases, and I've identified in red the areas that are going to have an impact where their level of service would be less than a level of service C. We'll continue to the next slide. These are all of the intersections that are anticipated to see some impact as a result of that full build-out. I did mean to clarify, and I should have done it in the previous slide, the no-build level of services, if the, under current conditions, this development did not occur, what that intersection would look like. So for the example of Cherry Blossom and Outer Ring, you're looking at a already under-level-of-service-C performance at that intersection. Build without improvements is just if they built it without taking into consideration any of the recommendations of the traffic impact study. For example, at Sims Road, the recommendation is to have the intersection that is lighted to have its timing evaluated to ensure that there is sufficient time for enough people to clear the intersection in an effective manner where it doesn't slow down the transportation network significantly, which would be that impact improvement with the build-with-improved The improvements recommended in 2036 is the full signal installation at the intersection of Cherry Blossom and Della Plain Road from Della Plain Road, and eastbound left turn ran onto Anderson Road from Della Plain Road, the widening of Anderson Road, and then the single-timing adjustments that I mentioned for the example, to the intersection of Cherry Blossom Way and Sims Pike. We'll proceed. So that intersection of Cherry Blossom Way and Della Plain Road is on that curve with a lot of grade change and a lot of high-speed traffic, and so staff has some concerns on when would a light be warranted in this intersection. And so staff has, has some concerns on when would a light be warranted in this instance. And the traffic, traffic signalization is, metrics are determined by MUTCD, and they do a warrant analysis to determine if there's enough traffic on the roads, especially trying to make specific turning movements that would necessitate a light at that location. The traffic study identified that there were insufficient trips to or from the project site to warrant a light at Cherry Blossom Way, as two of the one-hour windows evaluated when you're reviewing these traffic signal installations were underneath the metric that is required to trigger in order to get that light. However, the applicant identifies, and the traffic study identifies, that the light should be installed as part of Phase 1 in preparation for the future phases of development on the site and for other sites and other neighbors and general safety. Just having that light there really allows for people to slow down in an appropriate amount of time and ensure that motorists are the safest they can be in the current condition of that road. So staff would, and I kind of go into detail with the staff report, staff feels like that is appropriate. The light should come in at the beginning of this project because while the phasing is expected in 2036, there's always that option that a user comes in faster than, than the light is able to respond. And so by putting that light in in the very beginning, it is planning for that build-out and ensuring maximum safety for current residents and future staff and, and users of that site and other sites in the area. All right, we'll proceed. This is the landscape plan. I will highlight the areas of landscaping in a moment, as in now, so I'll proceed forward. So in green is the agricultural buffers section of the ordinance, so it is a property perimeter landscaping requirement along the north boundary, or when properties that are non-agricultural develop. So in this instance, it would require a 50-foot-wide buffer area with tree installation and no climb fencing. Along the boundary with Anderson Road, there are requirements for buffers in land use, no-use areas, or open space, no-use areas. And so we would see those areas also being kind of respected, keeping those existing trees where they can, and making sure that the site distances are clear. So in instances where the trees cannot be saved or it is unsafe to remove, to keep them around, they can be removed, but where possible, you want to keep that mature growth because that can, that has a value to the local environment and the local ecological systems. To the south, in the orange, is the preserve existing trees where feasible condition of, or CLUR that is referenced in the, the 91 plan. Again, we understand that with utilities infrastructure coming in and with roadway realignments coming into play, and also for site distance purposes, some trees may have to be removed. Where feasible, we would like to keep as many of those mature growth trees in order to help screen the property as well as help keep the area, kind of reduce that heat island effect that you see in areas with a large volume of paved and covered surfaces. In blue are internal of vehicle use area perimeter landscaping requirements. So when a parking lot or two roads run parallel, you want to reduce that light pollution kind of cross and kind of hitting you perpendicular to the direction you're going because that can create an unsafe circumstance. And so our landscape and land uses buffer ordinance has specific standards for screening that in order to reduce that kind of blindness from a, a light source to your, that is perpendicular to you. So I've kind of illustrated roughly locations where that would be required. Again, it's mostly along parking lots and parallel roads. So we would work with the applicant to ensure that the landscaping is done in accordance with our regulations as well as with the CLUR that was approved in 1991. All right, we'll proceed to the next slide. I'll take a breath for a minute. This is a graphic submitted by the applicant today that is in 11 by 17 that was distributed to the commissioners. At the meeting on Monday, we discussed the presence of a stream that is identified as a waters of Scott County stream. Per the adopted stormwater management ordinance in BMP manual, there, streams with a certain amount of drainage to them should be protected and should have reduced development in that area in order for the stream to be, to continue operating and letting water travel through an area. The applicant has requested that they deviate from that requirement to allow for some construction on the property. So fortunately, this does not have a very bright pop-up for the screen, but I'll try my best to illustrate it here. It's located in the southeast corner of the property, traveling from about center of the property in between buildings E and buildings G to just right, or just east of Siron Holdings off of Avuda's supplier-demand court. And so it's, you can see it kind of on top of graphical things, and I believe the next slide may have kind of a visual. This kind of area question is this kind of very thick pocket of grass of trees in this area. So if we'll go back to that slide. The applicant is requesting deviation to allow for, for impact to that stream area. I've also distributed to you guys an eight-and-a-half by 11 sheet of paper, kind of articulating some potential options that the app, that the planning commission may pursue to see if, if the stream needs to be protected, if that is the ultimate determination, or if a reroute or restructuring or putting additional stormwater management, wetland revitalization projects throughout the property or off-site in the same watershed.
It reviews the same options at work.
These are the same ones with some guiding language for conditions if you guys were considering or wanting to adopt any of them or looking into that. I'll give you guys a little bit of time to review that if you'd like, but...
Is this last one here really four, or it says three and three, but is that the fourth option? Similar to the four options before?
Yes, yeah, they should correlate one-to-one. It just, I guess the auto format did not agree with me when I wrote it all up.
So that the same options, just with additional language and with the conditions?
Yes, additional language that you could consider adding to it. It's what we would generally advise if that was the route that the commission went or wanted to pursue.
Okay.
There's kind of four recommendations about what they can do with the stream. The first is to require alteration of the site plan so as to not impact the stream at any point. It is about hun, it is about 900 linear feet long, so it would be remove, it would be moving or removing portions of buildings and also the dock areas and trailer storage areas in order for the stream to be, to have its appropriate repair and buffer, its easement, and its also continued health and existence in its location. Option two is allow for the stream to be rerouted above ground to maintain a portion of or remain, retain an idea of stream ecological wellness. We understand that by moving a stream, you kind of remove the ecological contribution it gives to the area. However, by rerouting it and kind of keeping the natural flow of the terrain and the natural flow of the stream in that area as best as possible, you can kind of almost reestablish and let it kind of rewild itself. And so that is an option available. Option three is to require the applicant to enter into agreement with the City of Georgetown for offset improvements to streams and wetlands equivalent to the area disturbed before construction. In the specific language on that sheet that I referenced and just gave you guys, it does specify that we would like it to be in the lanes-run watershed area because that is where the site is at. We would like it to stay local so that downstream impacts can be mitigated through investment into existing systems and watershed, in that watershed area. Option four is to enter into an agreement with the City of Georgetown or government agencies to provide payment in lieu of mitigation, similar to what the applicant had done with Kentucky Division of Water and the Army Corps of Engineers. They can kind of speak to how that process went. It sounded rather extensive, but again, they're the ones who went through it. The fifth option, I suppose, is to allow for the, or to approve the variance to allow for them to just go through the stream without having any kind of plan for mediation or enhancement of certain areas. I use this graphic here as a, if the applicant were to be allowed to remove the stream from the, from the property. It shows several kind of areas through squiggly lines that are blue that kind of look very similar to black. But those squiggly areas as areas that would have, or open areas that have space where they could put more water quality basins in and try to let those areas naturalize as best as possible to kind of make up for the lost components of that stream. Or then did you have to say something, or?
Yeah, just to clarify, so on the option sheet that was provided to you guys, that would be underneath option one. You'd go option one B two, and that reflects the site plan that they have provided.
One, I'm sorry, say that again.
Yeah, one B two.
Okay.
And so as, that's what that one is.
Okay.
And so if in your review that looks like a feasible option, then that's what you would reference.
With that, I'll proceed to the next slide. Maybe. And we'll go to the next slide. It is staff's recommendation that the preliminary development plan for the Commerce Park be approved. There are 23 conditions associated with this plan. The first four on this page are typical four you see for preliminary development plans. If you go to the next slide. Our next five are, are much of the same. A photometric plan be submitted and approved as part of the plan to ensure that no off-site impacts or that off-site impacts are mitigated onsite by directing lights to the property internally and to kind of prevent that light pollution getting off the site as much as possible. Option, let's see, you can, you can go back, you can go forward, okay. Option 12 has to do with the traffic control devices. KYTC has a system in how these things go through, and we would just defer that installation to KYTC, but advise heavily that we would like to see that light coming in at the beginning of the first phase. Again, for the interest of the safety of our, our residents and visitors and, and staff to that area, we would like to continue to see that area not have significant traffic slowdowns and a light maybe an excellent mechanism to ensure that that area is kept flowing as best as possible, given the amount of activity on the sites. Option 13 is a repeat of the CLUR condition regarding buffering. So it is that 50-foot open space, no-use strip and that 150-foot building setback line along the east and north properties lines. If the applicant were to return to the planning commission staff and say, we would like to pursue a variance for 125 square feet, or 125 feet from that property line, while the language does state that it, states specifically, quote, unless it is demonstrated that the property, that for this property, that a lesser buffer requirement would meet the intent of the comprehensive plan and over buffering plan, that item would have to come before you guys for review because that would be a deviation from that approved condition that you guys established. Item 14 has to do with the existing tree rows on the property perimeter, perimeter being remained, or remaining is where feasible. We understand, again, with improvements and expanding services, as well as in the interest of vehicular safety for those users onsite and off-site engaging in traffic in this area, those trees may have to be removed at, at entrance points, and it's kind of a, fortunately, a kind of a feature or part of development of sites. We would like to see as many of those trees kept as possible. Again, those existing trees have a, a large environmental benefit to the area, and we'd hate to see ones that don't need to go, having to go or leaving. We'll continue. Condition 15 has to do with the Crantown Lane dirt road to ensure that that alternative access is established when it is impacted. Condition 16 has to do with all access easements to Industry Road. As I stated, this property does not have access or does not have a direct frontage onto Industry Road, so all of those access points to Industry Road go through private properties. So we need to see easements recorded to ensure that those are legally of record routes to get to and from the site and to and from Industry Road. Let's see. All public roadways need to be improved, specifically for Anderson and Delaplane Road. It should be along the entire frontage of the properties and should be submitted and made when a final development plan would result in a driveway or roadway connecting to that road. So for example, if they weren't attaching to Anderson Road on the first phase, staff would find that it would not be necessary at this point to require Anderson Road be improved. But if a plan was going to propose a driveway onto it or a roadway onto that road, then Anderson needs to be brought up to that standard to handle that weight. Improvements to Industry Road may need, may be necess, may be necessitated in certain pockets of it as the industry, as the road is served by multiple users over, and over time, it may have seen some, some impact to it. The trap, the applicant shall construct turn lanes as described in the traffic study as part of the first development plan subdivision plat, when the plat, or plan would result in a driveway or roadway connection to the road. Again, just making sure that those connections and those turn lanes are being put in when the access is being proposed to that road at that location. Item 19 has to do with the collector roadways certain width standards, so either 40 feet wide, face to, face to curb, or a minimum width necess, necessary to accommodate an appropriate amount of 12-foot wide lanes. Item 20 has to do with the utilization of Anderson Road, which is that Anderson Road should not be utilized for industrial or construction traffic until such time that the road is brought to current industrial standards and can handle that level of, of weight and use. Condition 21 has to do with the plans for realignment of Delaplane Road and the dedication of right-of-way. Again, with that realignment plan, we want to make sure it's, it's going in the proper direction. Condition 22 has to work with updating the win, the lanes-run watershed model that our office maintains. And then condition 23 is a placeholder condition for the waters of Scott County determination that the planning commission would be making. Besides all that, that's all my conditions. Catch my breath.
When was this rezoned to industrial?
This was rezoned to industrial in 1991.
Long time.
Yeah.
Can I ask also a question? On the Crantown Road, is there already a legal easement recorded that allows for the access through there?
I'm going to point to the applicant on that one to, as they are the holder of the deed on this one. It's often referenced as a dirt road, but the, I'm going to look to Jake on that one and...
Yeah, I don't believe there's a reported easement, no.
It's just been the practice for some period of time, but no reported easement that, that requires it, okay? And then on the traffic light?
Correct.
Did I understand that under current KYTC standards, it wouldn't be provided until Phase 2?
That is correct, yeah. Phase 1's additional traffic load at that intersection does not trigger that light installation, but Phase 1 and Phase 2 does trigger that light installation metric, so...
But the staff's strong recommendation is that it be done at Phase 1?
Correct.
But we don't have control of it?
We do not, but it is, it is the advice of staff and on record that it be installed.
How much weight do you think that will carry with KYTC?
I will look to Ben to see if he has any thoughts on how much weight that would carry, or the applicant as a whole. Perhaps that is a more appropriate one to them.
Now, we've had a lot of discussions about KYTC and their lack of willingness to do things.
I think when the safety aspect comes to play, I think they'll be more open to it, but I can't really speak necessarily confidently whether or not, but I think they'll identify the safety aspect of someone trying to come left out there across three lanes to get onto Cherry Blossom.
Yeah. Could it be a condition of approval that if KYTC doesn't approve it, then they would have to wait until they, you know, did both phases at one time?
Charlie? I'm just going to...
Couldn't do that, but I mean, that, that state jurisdiction is not ours.
I know.
So, and...
I'm just concerned that saying we're going to heavily recommend that they do, knowing KYTC, might not matter.
Well, it'd probably matter, but it won't necessarily result in that.
Right.
And, I mean, they have on occasion done something we've requested, but most of the time, they're, they're quite dedicated to their, their, what do they call them, warrants, I think they call them. Those things have to be in place before they, you know, put that in the, you know, state budget or whatever.
But they wouldn't be paying for it.
Well, that's what I was about to say, so, but if the developer's paying for that, that's a little bit different animal.
Right.
If it was going into their budget, I dare say they probably would not, regardless of what we said. Otherwise, I mean, it seems like not a big obstacle, but anyway, it's, but still, it's their jurisdiction.
Yeah.
If we put that on and the applicant, and everything else, you know, was agreeable, and that was not there, I don't think there's any question, they could appeal that and, and set us aside on that condition. We really, I mean, it's just not ours. We really, I mean, it's just not ours.
Right, but if we said, okay, then you're going to have to get to the point initially that it would be required, so you're going to have to do phase one and two at the same time. Because then it would be required, right?
Probably.
Anyway, I'm just thinking.
Yeah, I understand.
Okay.
Anybody else?
I'm a little disappointed they didn't do the traffic study all the way down to where Delaplane comes out on 62.
You can ask the engineers to, their justification as to why they only went where they did.
Yeah.
At least, did I understand you to say that with the rerouting of Delaplane, to take that sharp turnout of it, there's going to be a three-way stop, a three-way intersection, but no stop sign?
Oh, no, no. That intersection reroute, or that, I'm sorry, that three-way stop is the intersection of Cherry Blossom and Delaplane. It's not that rerouting up into the project site and then that kind of intersection there. I don't know, Rhett, if you see a slide that has it. There, thank you. So, this is the area where that kind of, that stop or slowing would be occurring? That would not, that's not pertaining to this intersection.
Oh, okay. I see. So it's just existing just like it is now? Okay, all right. And then on Industry Road. Several months ago, we approved a development at the end of Industry Road.
Correct.
And it, and I may be wrong, but it seems like we approved that with the, that they didn't have to improve Industry Road that went through their property.
I would have to look at the record on that one to determine how that was approved and how that was reviewed. Because I do have similar recollection, but I do not have it off the top of my head with this plan of how they were approved or what they were conditioned with.
Yeah, where it comes into Industry Road, just thinking that new development that we approved was at the very end.
It was.
Of Industry Roads.
Yeah, that's what you're talking about, yeah.
Rhett, will you go back some until we see it?
On top, yeah, right there.
Oh, one.
Okay, yeah.
It's.
Okay, so it is.
It's like this area.
No, up a little higher, up in yellow, right there.
It was the other one that we did.
It is, the one that we most recently reviewed is in this location here, but this also is in industrially owned property at this point.
So, is that line of purple where it connects in with Industry Road, that connects into, is that your property?
It's right there. I'm very aware of all that right there. So, the property in yellow above is the same kind of property in that purple corner. They sold some of that off, but it all got put to industrial by 91.
Okay.
Charlie?
Yeah, we can have the gentleman's name so that Candy can put that in a minute.
Sir, your name?
Brian Trailer.
Brian Trailer. Thank you. All right, that's all I had.
If you don't mind, feel like technical difficulties, you know, he's going to take care of this and we have a plan.
So Holden, is it our responsibility to come up with a recommendation for stormwater management or does the developer, should they be coming with one of these and we yea or nay it?
So, the developer. The developer in submitting that most recent plan, I think, has indicated what their preferred option would be. Obviously, they started with a request for a variance and now it's come to this onsite mitigation tactic. It's within the purview of the planning commission that you guys can put whatever necessary conditions you feel appropriate, and that's why we created that placeholder condition at the bottom of that list. And so I believe that it would warrant some just discussion amongst the commission as to what they would like. I would also just like to defer to the applicant. They've obviously spent a lot of time on this site plan and as we've revised it even since Monday's work session, you can see we're trying to come to a solution that benefits the community.
Does anybody have, on the commission, have a preference or for how?
We'll hear from the developer, what their thinking is, what's viable and.
Well, I think that they, they.
That's what that is.
No, this is from the staff, I'm sorry.
But that's what they want, right there.
Okay, yeah, let's, let's hear from the developer on all these areas and then we can ask some questions from there. Who wants to step up there?
I'm Brian Ward, Palmer Engineering, and first I'd like to apologize because I got here late and there's a long line at the sign-in.
Oh, shame on you.
Shame on me, yeah.
Do you swear a firm statement you're about to make to be the truth, the best of your information and belief?
I do.
Thank you.
Okay. Back to the plan behind me here. The reason we proposed to do enhanced water quality and infiltration and enhanced environmental treatment on the site, rather than just leave the stream in place, is if you look to the north of the stream, you see a building, you see a road. It's all going to be filled in. So basically, if we developed around that stream that originates close to the middle of the site, you know, we'll lose, you know, 250,000 square feet of building, but also we cut off the water supply from it as well because we have to capture all the water and, you know, I mean, I guess we could pipe it under the buildings, which is typically not done, but you'd have buildings and slopes right up to the buffer area and even the quality of that stream would degrade over time. And, yeah, it would still be there, but the purpose for keeping it there would eventually go away. Does that make sense?
Well, I was thinking though, that in a stormwater quality plan, am I right, it would have to be the same as it was before, is that right?
Yeah, no.
It would not. So it could change, it could affect it, yeah. But the water quality coming in has to be the same as it was. What was that we had with Toyota, it was like that?
Volume and speed.
The volume and the speed, what was that with Toyota we had? I want to get that clear.
Eggs that has to be the same are the peak flow rates downstream.
Peak flow rate.
Water quality has a treatment parameter. They have to treat so much water per impervious area on the site, so they're going to do a lot of water quality treatment. They're going to do a lot of.
Yeah, but just the flow rate, that just the flow rate's all that was.
They have to meet the lanes run model, which is going to look at flow rates all the way to Elkhorn downstream. We got it.
What Ben's talking about, the flow rate that has to be maintained is downstream of the property. It would not be in that stream.
Gotcha. Sorry about that.
Okay. But anyway, that, we were thinking, you know, there's standards in the stormwater ordinance and manual for Georgetown that requires so much water quality, so much groundwater infiltration, and that's based on the impervious area throughout the site, the roofs, the parking, the roadways. And what we're proposing to do, really, yeah, the stream would be nice to look at, but really, the major benefit of a stream is, you know, it's ecological, it provides water quality benefits and things of that nature. So we're proposing to try to offset some of that throughout the site as part of getting this variance to fill in over this stream. And we're thinking, you know, somewhere in the, you know, between 10, 15, or 20% in excess of the current standard that's in Georgetown's manual. And we feel that, you know, that would, you know, be equal to or maybe even exceed the quality of, that that stream would provide improvements downstream.
And that's option B two on.
Options one, B two. Is that correct? Yeah. And we spent quite a bit of time thinking about the options and really for an overall view, we feel this is the, this is the best option, you know.
So how does that differ from, the language, it's quite the same, but it's similar to, and then number two, not B two.
I don't have that in front of me.
It says allow the stream to be rerouted above ground to facilitate new stream-like ecological functions and benefits.
Well, that stream's really low. I mean, we could, it would be hard to keep the flow in the stream with all the buildings around it and things of that nature onsite because we've got to catch the water. All the water on our site, we've got to catch it, treat it, and detain it, you know. And then, I mean, you've got a stream way down here and you've got these buildings way up here all the way around it. I mean, if you're going to reroute, I mean, you're going to have to raise the stream up first and then you'd have to treat water, reroute it, and then route it back to the stream just so it can flow through the stream. And then it really wouldn't be the natural stream that it was. It'd still be a man-made stream at the end of the day. And we can put meanders in it and riffles and runs and things of that nature, but, yeah.
But. How would, how would B two and two look on the property? What's the difference in how they would? Okay.
For option one, B two, we're putting water quality here, bio swells here, water claws, water pipe here, water, bio swells and pools here, intention water. A lot of these elements are still being placed, but not to the extent that we're proposing. Now, if we were to reroute it, we'd do some stream here and here, and it converges right there to exceed 50 acres of water. If we were to reroute it, we'd have to lose building space. I mean, here we'd still have to fill it in and maybe put it right in here, something like that. It wouldn't be much more than this right here anyway. The only difference is this is going to the water quality basin. If this comes through here, we'd have to keep it wet. We'd have to treat this water, this water, this water, and this water and here. To keep this wet, we'd almost have to come down here in the lower area, get it back, back up here, unless we left it in a ravine and just cut down this hillside. It would be very, very difficult to do that, B two.
Okay.
Hopefully that made some sense. Did I answer your question?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Ben, what is your expert opinion of being the water guy of the proposed one B two?
Yeah, I don't care.
I wanted to see you hold the mic in your hand.
They are, streams in industrial, what they're proposing, don't mix. It's not, you can't, in my opinion, you can't have with the grading, the amount of buildings and parking lots they're proposing, that stream can exist the way it is. Even if you put a ripper on it, if you did that, it takes up a large area. You will not have the same flows, whatever. So what they are proposing is above and beyond what they would be required to do. It's going to create stream-like features scattered throughout the area. Will not be, will not be streams. That stream's going to be, 900 feet's going to be lost forever, but they're going to have stream-like enhancements throughout the site is what they are proposing, which will provide a lot of benefit to the overall downstream quality of the water. So, yes, we've got a regulation that says, don't disturb it. The two, the two can't mix in the situation, is my opinion.
Okay. Thank you.
I got a question.
Yes, sir. Please come up here to the podium here and state your name.
So I'm Brian Trailer. I'm over on Sims. My question is, this is phase one. I know it's probably going to impact Anderson down here. When we go into phase two, I'm the one that's going to take the water off the other side over there downstream and hit the lake on Sims, which will be beneath where they're proposing to put in this metal recycling place. I was just wondering, has anybody looked at that top part there on phase two yet? Yeah. If there was any way to, I need some, I need some dirt, some landfill, and a pond down there. Because it's blowing everything out just without having any 2 million square foot of flat surface coming my way. Yeah.
Brian, you made me take ass for a point.
You mean that was an option? I don't need my glasses.
You can't even get your package right now.
The whole package.
Scott can tape it up on the wall.
Let's put you in the back corner with the tape.
I have to get closer every year.
I just looked at the topo and the plans. There's essentially a higher area in here. If you look at the existing topography, this brings to this stream here. So the water's flowing towards the building here, here, and here.
Okay.
Except right here's a hotspot. Existing, the water's flowing this way.
Right.
However, we, you see these little blue arrows here?
Okay.
We've sloped the road toward our site to where this will get, won't get any more water than it's given today. And then catching that, treating it, and then piping it, treating, piping, treating. There should not be any water except.
Escaping to the west?
There's no, the only water leaving the site is up here.
Right.
And then down.
Yeah, I understand that.
So there's not water to the west?
Yeah, the northwest side will be what I take, whatever comes up there.
North is produced.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And if there was any backfill, I could use it. I've already been wiped out down there on Sims.
Any other questions for the staff or the developer? So do we have anyone in the audience that has a question for the staff or developer here?
Right here.
Yes, sir.
If Thompson, my old property to the north.
Yeah, come on up here.
That hotspot he's talking about will come across me before it hits that drainage area to get to Brian. My property currently, ag land being, had been used for pasture, for livestock cattle. I don't have any right now, doing some hay production, but I also have that access of that drainage ag land, which goes into my property. And I want some comments to the planning commission.
It's not an dirt road.
It's not a dirt road, it's a rock road, as you saw on that picture. Every rock in there since 2000 has been put in, bought by me or my father prior to his passing. It's an old county road. And back when Macy Tackett was judge executive and Charlie Hoffman was commissioner in the area, was the last rock that the county put in. I drive on that every day, every pothole, every time it rains, comes off the soybean field, down the roadway, but that's my access in there. So I'm not willing to reroute my access to my property. I'm not willing to agree to anything that's a bunch of malarkey. That's my statement.
And it's on the map, Craintown.
And Craintown's been on the map for years.
Yep.
I'll just expand this a little bit wider. Durwood Welding did the title search back in the 70s when that was purchased by my father. That property has been deeded to some member of my family since 1873, deeded from the Peabody Buggy Company, not the Coal Company. Durwood Welding, if any of you knew him, was a history bug. He loved it. So that particular property goes back to a handshake in 1919 from my grandfather to his father. The deeds didn't show up till the 30s, but that community, Craintown, was similar to Boyd Town, New Zion, so on and so forth. I own all of that property in there right now. I'm not developing. Developing is coming to me. So I want fair consideration with that roadway. I'm not willing to drive around through a gated warehouse or anything of that nature. It's there, that's why I have a truck, because it is a gravel road. So whatever proposed, it better be a darn good proposal because I'm not willing to agree to malarkey. My statement.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Appreciate it. Do we have anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
I'm Julie McLean, and I'm on Rogers Gap Road. And I just want to know, when is enough by not? I mean, most of the people in here, we live where we live because we don't want to live in the big city. We don't want to live where there's semis running us off. We don't want to live where there's semis running us off the road all the time. Just this week, I got ran off the road trying to turn left back to the interstate because a truck just didn't stop. I had to bring their road. They just kept on going. Men is enough enough. I mean, I understand they want to make a lot of money. I get that. But we don't choose to live where we live, to live in the big city. I mean, we're a, we're a small, tight-knit community, Sims, Rogers Gap, Anderson. I, I know a lot of people from Anderson, they're not even here tonight. Did you put up zoning signs on Anderson?
No, I understand.
I mean, those people, I've got a lot of friends that live here, they're not here tonight. They don't love this. I mean, this, you can widen the road, you can add asphalt and make it thicker, but you can't change the hills and the curves. That curve on Cherry Blossom where they're talking about putting this, that's one of the worst curves on Cherry Blossom Road. I mean, I just, that's all.
Thank you, ma'am.
Very briefly for the record, we need people out in the podium. We actually pick everybody up. We're having difficulties grabbing everybody.
Commission, I'm here tonight as a taxpayer, not as someone that responds in this community. And I'm primarily concerned about Anderson Road. I'm, I'm concerned about it all.
Excuse me, before you get going, can you state your name?
Charles Helms. I'm primarily, if you've, if you've been out there lately, and believe me, Toyota's a great neighbor. When they develop and they decide to build, they build towards the interstate. They don't build towards homeowners. And of a morning, leaving for work, it's a 25 mile an hour zone from the time you come off Cherry Blossom onto Old Della Plain till you go over the hill headed out to 62. They don't know what 25 mile an hour is. Have you been down Anderson Road? That's where we live. Cars have to stop to allow each one to get by. But we also have school buses on that road. I'm not against development. I've seen it blow up here since 1986. Come, a lot of good, some things are not good, but that's, that's, that's part of, that's part of growing, is growing pains. I ask you to look comprehensively at the plan for Anderson Road and Della Plain Road area. We've had several major accidents right there at the end of Old Della Plain on Cherry Blossom. I got a good friend here tonight whose son, whose grandson's lucky to be here. Went long after that, another one happened. The semis coming in and out out there. I'm sure there's a plan to make this work, but for the sake of our kids, for the sake of our property out there, Anderson Road needs a lot of consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike Brown, I live on Sims Pike. I have a question. Does this proposal involve the cemetery that's on the Old Della Plain Road?
Talk about the cemetery on phase two?
Yes.
Down the corner down there?
No. It's in the middle of phase two.
Brian, will you come up and say that? Turn to the mic, please.
And if it does, what is the plan for that?
It would have to be located. I believe there is a cemetery right here. Like a scene, and there's more right here.
And there's one in the bottom left-hand corner.
Be phase two.
Down in the bottom left-hand corner says cemetery.
Right here.
No, on down to your left.
Down here?
Right there says cemetery.
Oh, that's on a different property.
Okay.
Yeah, that's on, property right here, cemetery.
Okay.
It's on the other side of the alley.
So to answer his question, what, what has to be done to move those cemetery?
Well, we have an arch, we'll have, get an archaeologist involved and they'll have to go through the state protocols to relocate that. So that's...
Are they active cemeteries right now, Mr. Brown? Do you know?
Sure. I haven't been over in a while to see dates or anything. I don't think anybody recent has been carried there, but I haven't checked dates. A lot of its overgrown right now, hasn't been cleared. You can't hardly see tombstones right now. One other comment I have is that I know a lot of people, you know, going on her statement, there's a lot of people in Anderson that can't be here tonight because of a funeral. I just want it known that there's other people that are opposed to development because we didn't move to the county because we wanted to live in an industrial area. All of us that live on Sims, Anderson, you know, all the roads out there, we moved to the county to be in the county.
Yes.
Not in an industrial park. We're all opposed to any of this.
I understand that, but you also must realize that this has been proposed for industrial since 1991, 92.
I understand that.
Zoned industrial, yeah. I mean, that's where our challenge comes in, is we're not deciding whether or not this property should be industrial. That was decided in 1991, way before any of us were sitting on this.
Oh, I, I understand.
So we're just, we're here to decide, is this plan appropriate? And does it meet our zoning ordinances and requirements? I understand the concerns about Anderson. I don't know, I don't want to call anybody out that's here from fiscal court by name, but if there's anybody here from fiscal court that might want to speak to any future plans for Anderson, I know we did have a couple of folks here earlier, but I don't know if they're still here or not.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Charlie, I will ask, I understand, I will ask for the record that we keep the crowd noise closed at home so that we can keep a high-quality record that we try to get everybody in.
Thank you.
I'd like to speak briefly if I could. My name's Jacob Cassidy. I work with Make Commercial Group, the developer of the property. With respect to Crane Town Road, you know, we've owned this property for two and a half years. We've been going through the Army Corps of Engineer process on the streams and the BAT studies and worked closely with Palmer to come up with a plan that I think fits the current zoning ordinance. With respect to Crane Town Road, yeah, I just wanted to highlight kind of the phased process of this plan. Phase one won't impact Mr. Thompson's property. We'll be providing an improved access point over to industry, but if he wants to continue to drive on the, on the gravel road, we have no issue with that. If he wants us to pave it, we can have that conversation. We're, we're happy to work closely with him on that. But for phase one, what we're, what we're here to discuss today, we won't be impacting his road. He's welcome to use it and happy to, you know, work with him on it.
Thank you.
April Castle?
Come up, come to the microphone first there.
April Castle? I live over on Anderson Road. My daughter rides the school bus every day. It's very concerning because people do fly down that road, and a lot of times you will see the bus trying to pass the garbage truck. And that is interesting, to say the least. It's a very narrow road. I didn't move out there to be dealing with neighborhoods. I have five acres. It's lovely. I don't want to deal with an industrial park.
Thank you. If anyone else like to make a comment one way or the other? Yes, sir?
Bobby Shout. I live in Brookland, and it's off of Della Plain. And anybody that's been on that road between, I won't even go out when, when Toyota lets out because it's so crazy. And I worked with it for 30 years. I've moved to that area to get away from the town just a little bit and still be close to work. The facility itself concerns me with just the noise level.
Excuse me a minute. We need to hold the talking down out here. The mic picks it up and we don't have, can't get a recording on it. So if you could, please. Yes, sir.
Okay. So my concern is, and I'm not against, you know, growing and industry because that's, that's what's made my living. However, it's going to affect a lot of lives in that area, especially all the homeowners on Anderson. And I live in Brookland, which is right adjacent to it. It's definitely going to, the noise level alone from trucks backing into docks, and that's going to, I'm sure it's going to be a 24-hour facility, that the noise alone is going to be crazy. And the traffic, I mean, Della Plain is terrible. It's not even roadworthy, in my opinion, in certain parts of it. And it's a single lane, obviously goes a single lane after it passes the industrial area there. Semis, everything come through there from 62, which is going to be a nightmare. It backs up almost to my subdivision when Toyota lets out. And that's just Toyota, you know, during the day. And then fir, first shift, second shift, so on and so forth, going to 62. So again, it's going to, it's, it's definitely going to impact my family and I'm sure everybody's family in Brookland from the noise and the traffic alone that it's going to generate. So quality of life there won't be great. And I feel like we've all, most people in here, I'm sure, have been here a long time and paid a lot of money to this, this town, and they would definitely force me out. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shat. Several references have been made to, to Anderson Road, the traffic on there. It's not going to be going down Anderson Road very far, just the length of the, the development there. So it's not like we're going to have semis going from Muddy Ford Road all the way across Anderson Road to, out to Della Plain here. And they will be widening Anderson Road on the part that, that's affected there. I just wanted to, to make that comment there, so that you understand that it won't be that little narrow-lane road getting into this industrial facility here. All right, any other statements, comments? Yes, sir?
I just want to make a little bit of observation comment. My name is John Bishop.
John what?
John Bishop.
All right, thank you, John.
Okay. I've been picking up garbage in Scott County for 30 years. And I understand, and I don't mean any disrespect for anybody, on this road is narrow and this road is narrow. 90% of the roads in Scott County is narrow. And if you're going to develop an area, improving the ingress, egress area, that negates the trucks or whatnot that you're talking about. But the roads are going to be narrow until we get large enough to where we can pave them wider. And then half the people on Anderson Road don't want to give up that little bit of road frontage to make it wider. I grew up on Anderson Road. It took us 15 years to get the two wooden bridges concrete. You know, used to smoke cigarettes underneath the concrete bridge. So I do like to see progress and I do like to see that they are trying to make it environmentally friendly, taking care of the water runoff. Different parts in the county, dries a bone most of the year. Spring hits, you got three-foot water. Big roads, yellow line down the middle underwater. It happens. So they're taking precautions as best they can to negate the water issues and the traffic issues, as long as we stay on top of them. I think we let them do it. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Appreciate it.
My name's Phyllis Gibson, and I live on Sims. And it's like two and a quarter mile road. I live almost to the end of Sims. And I, with the Toyota, traffic, Sims is non-stop traffic all night, on and off. But certain hours, it's, it's fully traffic. But when you get to the end up there to Cherry Blossom, a lot of times you've got to sit there forever. I sat there for over 12 minutes just two weeks ago before I could even get out on Cherry Blossom. Because even though there's a light there, a lot of times they don't stop because they're rushing, you know, to get in to Toyota. I mean, I know it's not your guys' problem, but it does happen. And I've lived down there for 30-plus years. My grandchildren still live down there. But with all that traffic, Sims is not real wide either, but you get traffic from the 25, Sadieville, Turkeyfoot, Roger, I mean, we're all a community together, and Sims is one of the busiest roads you're going to be on. And we got those humps and curves and all that, and we get those 18-wheelers down there, you better find a place to get over because if you don't, they're going to run over you. But at least most of us have driveways that we can kind of get into where they go by, but they get lost. Because that road there, when you turn off at Cherry Blossom onto that Old Della Plain, I think's what you're calling it, that, coming down on Sims, they get lost. They go down there, you got the railroad track, they can't turn around. They have to pull them back and pull them back till they can come back up Sims because they can't go across that railroad track. They can't go down toward Turkeyfoot. So, you know, Sims is really a dangerous road too, if you're talking about industrial park, people get lost. Where does that leave our grandkids? Where are our kids at?
I understand what you're saying, but this road doesn't connect to Sims.
No, I was talking about, like, I thought they brought Sims up in the phase two part, when the phase two where Sims came in?
Yeah.
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 Yeah, for the traffic.
Oh, okay.
Because they use Sims to pass through.
The intersection there.
Mm-hmm.
Ma'am, how many years did you say you've lived there?
I've lived there for 30-plus years.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
Just an item for, for the record, and I'll point to the traffic engineer and the engineering staff for the applicant as well. The development here is not going to directly have a direct tie to Industry Road, but they did look at intersections in proximity to see how those ones are performing. Because if you develop one area, area, you tend to see some impacts elsewhere. It isn't just like drop a car out of, out of a space, out of a void. They have to get through several other intersections to get there. So again, they look at the health of other ones surrounding, even if they may not be directly accessing it as part of the development project.
Thank you.
One more thing I'd like to add to the mic, please.
Yes, sir. Come back up there to the microphone, please.
Why haven't, why haven't they looked at our industrial parks that we have? The one there, I think it lanes in, is that what it's called? It's half-empty. Why, why would you build in a place that's already structured for that and could hold that, the semi-traffic and everything?
Well, this was structured for this also, just like Lanes Run Business Park was too. So, you know, they, they had their choice there, and this was available.
And this is a different kind of industrial park than Lanes Run, right?
Well, yeah, that's the cities, this is private.
Yeah.
Oh, this was zoned years before.
But I was, I was thinking the limitations put on Lanes Run were a lot different than maybe to allow things like this.
They're more, they're far more strict.
More, I don't say office, but more, yeah. I don't know that they have I-1 in there, do they?
I don't think so.
That's what, that's what I was...
I don't think they have I-1 in Lanes Run.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I do believe there's a need for this in the county of industrial. We, we see that. Thing about Lanes Run, you think it's half-empty, and I know I lived there. And it's full, it's not that, it's not half-empty. We see all that land over there and we think, I do too, I look at it and go, man, I'd like to bale hay off that, I've had time. You know, but, but that's not things they're going to develop, I guess, along the creek and everything. I assume they're not, I wish Jack was here to talk about that.
But some of it's been sold, just not developed.
Just not, not developed yet, yeah. It's, it's in...
And they've got far more open areas required of them.
Yes.
Just because of that's Lanes Run Business Park.
So, as I understand it, you can't really compare the two because they are different.
Yeah.
You know, just making that, letting, being known to the public that it is different.
All right, any other, any more questions or comments?
Charlie, just one thing I'd kind of like to say is, you know, I, I know there's a lot of people out here and they've got to go someplace. And whether it's commercial or whether it's homes or whatever, but just in the humor part of it, I've heard people say, I'm going to leave this place. It's full of people and everything. I want to go to Minnesota, or I want to go to Montana, or whatever. And to that I say, in humor, I'll say, you know, those people live 100 miles apart. know, those people live 100 miles apart. But if you go and build a house between them, you're crowding them." You know, really something to think about.
Yeah.
It's cold in Minnesota, too.
And Montana.
And Montana. I'll just add, I under, I do understand the concerns that folks have brought up. It's challenging for us as a commission on several fronts, because obviously we want to listen to the public input. On the other side of it, we're not here to decide whether or not this is gonna be zoned industrial. That was decided by the parties that be back in 1991. We're here to decide, is this plan, Phase 1 of this plan only, because that's what we're here to look at, appropriate for what is already zoned industrial here? And have they done what they need to relative to our zoning ordinances, as well as mitigation of the stream and all those sorts of things? There's another challenging part for us, because we hear a lot, "We wanna save farmland, we wanna save farmland." Well, one way to save farmland is to use the land we already have zoned, as an example, as industrial, or in some cases, it's already zoned as residential to build houses on. And we have to let the comprehensive plan for the future, as well as what the current zoning is, guide us. And legally, our requirement is to make the decision based off of what the zoning ordinances are, not what we might prefer for our town or for the residents around it. So, I just want to make that clear as we're talking about it. Even if we vote differently, it's not that we don't value the input of everybody here or value the opinion. But the reality is, we have a legal obligation, and it limits us in terms of what we can and can't do relative to things that come before us. So, that's all I have to say.
I would also, I would like to say, there are communities who do vote no, in places where they say you can only vote yes. Just happened in Woodford County. They were taken to court, sued over, and they won. So, this absolute yes versus no, there's always public input, and that's why y'all are here. But there never is absolute, has to be a yes, never, has to be a no.
And I wasn't saying that. What I was saying, what my legal obligation is when I was sworn in as a commissioner here. So, you can decide how you wanna take your legal obligation. But when I swear to uphold something, then I pretty much try to do it. So.
Well, I was just expressing what.
That's fine, that's fine.
I feel that can be done.
That's fine.
And there are other communities that feel that way as well. And there are court systems in this state that agree with that.
Yes, sir.
I just want to say, I respond to what you guys just talked about. My name is Bob Phila. I live over on Sims. But the thing I want to say is, obviously, was rezoned years ago, and you can't control that. You can control what kind of industry and how much property, I'm talking land is covered with buildings and things like that. How many employees are gonna be working out of there, how much traffic it's gonna generate. You have control over those things based on the plan. You can approve or disapprove a plan, and that can dictate some of those elements that affect some of these things that these folks are talking about.
We can say yes or. I mean, we can say yes or no to plans relative to what our zoning ordinances allow or don't allow for. I can't make up my own rule.
Bob, I understand what you're saying. And Elise, early, excuse me, excuse me, I didn't interrupt you. Let me, early in the presentation, Elise talked about our planning and zoning regulations say that a building can't take up more than 50% of the building lot, and this one takes up 32%. So, they are underdeveloped. They could have made it, put more buildings on there legally. Okay? Yes, sir. Right.
I just wanted to make a clarification that the application for the preliminary development plan is for both Phase 1 and Phase 2 on the preliminary.
Yeah.
And then, then you'll have a final for Phase 1, and then a final for Phase 2.
I'm sorry, say that again?
This is for both phases, preliminary, development.
Preliminary, and then you'll have to come back for final.
They'll come back. They'll have to come back for 1 and 2.
Okay. And though, coming back for 2 is when we'll talk about Craintown Lane, if it gets to that point?
Well, we would hope to have had Crain, Craintown Lane worked out by the time Phase 2, before it submitted. That's the plan.
This is just approval to move forward with your.
Approval to move forward.
Next phase of the plans?
Yep, next phase of the plans for the whole.
For Phase 1 and 2, okay.
This is preliminary development plan. Nothing's set in stone yet. This is a preliminary All right, if we have no other comments, I'll take a motion of some sort.
Chairman, this one.
Yes.
May I just remind you to please modify that last condition relative to the stream?
Yes, I was gonna put that in, make sure we have that in there. Yep.
And can we, I know that it doesn't require it, and maybe they could appeal it. Charlie?
Oh, yes, ma'am.
I could tell you didn't know I was talking to him. Can we at least put a condition in that says, while we don't have jurisdiction over it, we say a traffic light would need to be put in, even if that requires the building of Phases 1 and 2 simultaneously?
But that's not gonna happen. They can't.
And they could, couldn't they?
I'm trying to work my way through that.
Okay.
The, the problem, I think, is, and, and I'll try to think out loud, maybe you can correct me if I'm wrong. But what you're saying is, number one, we are approving them both if, if that happens.
Preliminary development.
Yeah, preliminarily. But we're not, or we can't require them to do everything at once. This just allows them to, you know, continue with administrative and all kinds of other thousands of things that they've got, other than just construction. But we can't require them to build both, which would then maybe give impetus to DOT to go ahead and require lights and other improvements. So, we can put in there that we want that. We can, in fact, we can staff individual members, can contact DOT and, you know, and, and lobby for that. But we can't require them to build a, a certain, other than Phase 1, Phase 2, obviously. So, I, I don't know how we would do that to force the hand.
Okay.
All we can do is just say, "We recommend that that light be put in Phase 1." And they've already done that in their conditions of approval.
Well, yeah, but if DOT says no, then they're not gonna put that in, in Phase 1.
Right.
And, and obviously, we would have the choice at that point, we, meaning the commission would have the choice, of bringing them back up and perhaps taking action, you know, if you think that's wrong.
And discussing it as a part of the final development plan.
Well, you can always discuss it and always make conditions based on it. The only way, though, that I think you ever force that issue, and I don't know that it would even do that then, and that is, you put it in, they come back for the final, and the state has said no. And then we basically say, "We're not approving." And, and again, that's us taking action on something we don't have jurisdiction over. So, I think, I, I understand doing it, but I don't think we're on really good ground doing it.
The developer has already agreed to pay for the light, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm a little confused. So, we've got on our plan for access to Industry Road, but then, did I hear a while ago that there was no access to Industry Road?
That kinda threw me, too.
Did you hear that, too?
So, they're correct. The versions that are in your guys' packet was the version that had two connections to Industry Road.
There is one connection.
There is one connection still. It will still be that north kind of arch over the property and then return to the existing terminus of, of Industry Road. Previously, along that south boundary line, there showed a, with those two buildings that they had to remove, because the buildings were bisected by the property line, there was a proposed connection from this intersection here, along this area, and then connecting it the southern port, part, port, part of Industry Road. And that is no longer being requested.
Correct.
So, there will be one, not two.
Okay, but Industry Road will still be used?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, living out there and being out there, I'm on for, we need jobs. We've got a lot of new houses. People are gonna have kids. And then, and I want people to be able to stay here and work.
Don't you make an motion?
Nope. That is not. What I am saying is.
Well, I need a motion.
Delaplane, Delaplane's, you know, I love the traffic that is stopped there. Well, traffic's not gonna stop there. You're gonna bottleneck it into Delaplane, which is god-awful. It's not terrible, but it's not meant to handle this kind of traffic. And maybe one day it'll be fixed at that point. But I can't support anything that's, that goes on to Anderson the way it does. And then, that's just not at this time.
They're gonna widen Anderson.
I know, but it's gotta go to, it's gotta go to Delaplane.
What do you mean? What has to go to Delaplane?
When, Anderson goes right to Delaplane. And when they go this way, it's nice to have all this here, but you're gonna dump all this, every, 2,000 people are gonna dump out into this, this light. And I just don't, I don't, I see that as asking too much for that. And I love this.
You know they're gonna widen Anderson?
No, he's talking about.
They, they still gotta get to, they're not staying on Anderson.
So, are you looking then for the traffic study to 62? Is that what you're asking?
Well, I'm just saying, Delap, no, I don't even need a traffic study to tell you what Delaplane is. I don't, I don't need that. I live out there. I just, that's an awful lot to dump into there. The scope of this is pretty big for that, I think. And I love the location, because it's close to the interstate, and it's got access right there to Cherry Blossom, but I also hate that curve.
So, what industry would be appropriate there since it's.
Something maybe with not 2,000 people. And, you know, they're, they're asking for, to move the stream to get another 275,000 square feet. I get that. But it's already huge. I just don't, I, I think it's too big for right here.
So, is that you making the motion?
Hmm? No, I know. I'll, I'll, I would make it, yes, I'll make a motion that we vote no on.
And I'll second that motion.
Okay.
I'll make a motion we vote no on, what's the number on this?
BDB 2025.
BDB 2025 dash 13, on the basis of traffic and the, the access to the roads, access to the property for the size. I don't think that's in the benefit of the.
Traffic on Delaplane.
In the whole area, in the entire.
Even though it's virtually directly onto Cherry Blossom, biggest road we've got.
Mm-hmm. But, however, Toyota has got 7,000 people, and they got, how many entrance ways does Toyota?
About 10,000, plus contractors.
But how many entrance ways do they have to Cherry Blossom? How many gates?
Seven or eight.
Seven or eight gates. Seven or eight gates. Yeah.
I see what you're saying.
Yeah, one. Yeah. It's just the choke-down point for that many people. I want, I think Industry right there is, is great. I love it being that close to, to Cherry Blossom and the flipping interstate's right there. But that's, that's just asking, a big ask for me to, to support. Yeah.
All right, I have a motion by Mr. Green and a second by.
Just go make a clarification, if that's okay.
All right, can we?
Yeah, can we do that while we're milling voting?
Motion's on the floor. I think action has to be made.
I, I think so, too. I think you all can discuss it, but I think the floor has to stay until this motion is taken care of.
Okay.
Now, obviously, if what he says changes the way people think about this motion, well, then you could make another motion. But I, I think that's correct. I think once it's on the floor and seconded, you all can discuss this motion.
But, but we can discuss it after we.
We can make another motion after that, yeah.
Take the motion and the second.
Oh, you can, yes, yes.
Then it can be discussed. Yeah, okay.
But I'm just saying, the, the public comment needs to wait until after you finish with this motion.
Brian, hold on. We've got a motion by Mr. Green, a second by Mr. Jesse, for denial. Is that, can I say that, or?
Yeah, oh, yes, yes. And based upon, basically, the traffic and the access points back to Cherry Blossom. It's just not sufficient for this side.
The number of access points being too few to Cherry Blossom?
Yeah. Yeah, for this size development. I think that's what the motion is.
That'll look pretty good. Yeah, my concern is not development in the areas, the size.
It should be smaller development.
I just wish this was better.
You wish what?
Wish that was better.
All right, can we now ask for a clarification on something from a engineer?
You know, you know, that's, that's a slightly different animal than what we talked about just a second ago. If members have a question in order to be able to address this motion, I'd say the chair can make that ruling and do that. As far as just opening up for comment, I don't think that's appropriate. I think you need to handle this.
Okay.
But if your all's discussion is that you need some information to vote on this, then I think that probably is appropriate. That's what the chair wishes to do.
All right. Brian, what would you like to clarify for us?
I would just like to clarify, Anderson Road's been improved to industrial standard. Delaplane Road is being approved to industrial standard, and Industry Road is being approved. All surrounding roads are being approved as part of this project. We've got a traffic study of the same light here that shows that it's operating to success to standard. We also studied that light, and we studied the next light up at Sims. That is in front of you. So, that's.
Okay, so, but we will have access onto Cherry Blossom only from Industry Road.
Yes.
And from Delaplane there at the light.
Here.
Okay. And I think what Brad's concerned is that traffic from Anderson Road going back towards 62 on, on Delaplane.
It's one.
Okay, I have a.
Can I ask another clarification?
Uh-huh.
There are no other opportunities for access. Okay.
All right, I have, again, have a motion and a second for denial. So, if you vote yes, you're voting for the denial. If you vote no, you're voting for the approval. Does everybody understand that?
No, you're voting no to deny, no against denial, not voting anything for approval of this motion.
Right. But, but vote, voting against the denial.
Yes.
All right. Yes, sir, correct.
Yeah.
And it states how, again?
Pardon?
How's that state?
If you vote yes, you're voting to approve Brad's motion to deny.
Yes.
If you vote no, you're, you're not voting to approve it. You're just voting to not go along with his motion. Okay?
I think a lot of people's confused.
All right. Ms. Singer?
I'm, I'm, can you come to me by and start in a little bit?
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Adair?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
No.
Mr. Stone?
No.
Mr. Vest?
Yes.
Mr. Jesse?
Yes.
Ms. Singer?
No.
And the chair votes yes also. Okay, 2, 4, 5, to 3, the motion carries.
We do need to make a note of how many we have here, though.
Do, do you make?
That, that doesn't matter, does it?
No, but at the beginning, we didn't. I'm just, as a separate matter, we didn't talk about it.
Do we need to, when we don't have someone here, do we need to make it in the minute, in the minutes there, or is it picked up automatically?
Obviously picked up.
Okay, we don't have to state it, then?
Yeah.
Okay.
If you'd like to.
No, I don't care. No.
No, we're, we're good.
I just know typically, we've done it at the beginning.
Okay. All right. That takes care of first item.
Number 2. Also the same area. And it's with the public hearing, right?
All right. If I could have your attention, please. The next item, a business ZMA 2025 dash 23, Bluegrass Metal Recyclers Zone Map Amendment for 53.5 acres from A1 agricultural to I2 heavy industrial, located at 300 Sims Pike. And this is a public meeting, and so I am opening the public meeting.
For record, it's a public hearing.
Public hearing, I'm sorry. We're in a public meeting.
Yes. And will you, is it open?
Public hearing. Excuse me.
He opened it.
Oh, wait, we are.
Yes, I opened it, yeah.
Thank you. This is ZMA 2025 23, not 13, a zoning map amendment for 40, for 53.5 acres from A1 agricultural to I2 heavy industrial. It is located at 300 Sims Pike and is to the north. east and west, to the north and east, it is, adjoins agriculturally zoned properties. To the south, it join, I can't find the words today. It adjoins light industrial properties. And then to the west, it adjoins the railway, which then also adjoins light industrial properties. The access to this property is exclusively on a Sims Pike, which then connects to Cherry Blossom Way or Rogers Gap to the north. And the proposed development is shown on the concept plan is a transfer facility, recycling facility, and auto parts facility with a salvage yard. This is the project site identified in red. To the south is a property that is outlined in yellow. Yellow in this instance is those properties which are annexed into city limits. After discussion with representatives from the city, they had expressed no interest in having the property be annexed into city limits. So in this instance, if this was ultimately approved or wherever it went from here, it would be going to the fiscal court should the applicant wish to go further with the application.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Yes.
Did the city inform you of why they're not interested? Because they normally are. They give a reason?
I do not have it off the top of my head, no.
But they did give some type of reason when you spoke to them?
I can't speak to it off the top of my head, no. I am not a representative of the city, so I can't speak further.
But did you get something from the city in writing? Or how was that communicated to you?
It would be an email between Holden and a representative from the city and not myself, and I don't have that in hand.
I would like to have a copy of that at some point.
We can direct that to him when he returns. Uh, this is a property, is the property in slightly zoomed in detail. Per the zoning ordinance, the heavy industry use is, are those uses whose processing operates, processing operations resolved in the outdoor storage or processing of materials or products, the emissions of any atmospheric pollution, visible light flashes or glare, odors, noise or vibration which may be heard or felt off the premises, or those industries which constitute a fire explosion or other hazard detrimental to the health and welfare of the community or adjacent property owners. Uses in the heavy industry zone are those which require extraction, storing, processing of minerals and raw materials, and all those permitted in the I1 zone. Uh, conditional uses in the zone include those such as junkyards, sanitary landfills, and outdoor storage. After review of the proposed use on the site, staff concludes that this use is appropriate for a heavy industry zone, whether or not it is in this location, a waste transfer facility, a recycling facility, and the auto parts with salvage yard is appropriate for that zone due to their processing and utilization or work with raw materials and, and other product. There are several other factors that would have to come into play if this specific use wanted to occur on the site. For example, Scott County ordinance in 1904 has to deal with the location of solid waste transfer facilities. And the auto salvage yard meets the definition of a junkyard per the zoning ordinance, which is a conditional use in the industrial zones. So if that was to be pursued by this property owner or another I2 property owner, they would have to get a conditional use permit first through the appropriate board of adjustment prior to start of operations on the property. Uh, that goes the same way for outdoor storage related to that business. So we would be seeing use permits go before the boards of adjustment, either together or independently as, as portions of a business were to come into play. Uh, so this is not the only time Planning Commission, if this were to be approved, would be reviewing these types of cases.
Could I just make sure I understand? It does fall under the solid waste transfer facility ordinance, but not the one that, but it precludes a junkyard?
No, it includes both. It's just the solid waste transfer ordinance is administered through the fiscal court and the use permit process, the conditional use permit process is reviewed through the Planning Commission's Board of Adjustment that we manage and operate or staff.
What's being proposed, though, would fall under the solid waste transfer?
Yes, a portion of the business would, yes.
That's what I was trying to clarify.
A portion of the business would also fall under auto salvage and a portion of the business would also participate in the, or would fall under the outdoor storage, which is why I brought it up.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, this is the layout of the project site. For reference, I did flip it 90 degrees. So north is facing to the right. Uh, the concept plan shows three buildings located off of Sims Pike, a 30,000 transfer, 30,000 square foot transfer facility, a 45,000 square foot recycling facility, and a 1, and a 10,000 square foot auto parts facility. Uh, as a concept plan, just meant to illustrate how a property of this zone could be utilized, the materials, heights, and setbacks are not provided at this point in time. But if the zoning map amendment were approved, much like any other zoning map amendment, preliminary and final development plans would be required to be approved onsite prior to the construction on the property. And in between that process of, of potential rezoning of any property and development plans, we expect that those use permits and all those other requirements of ordinances, both within our office and outside of our office, be satisfied prior to or as part of their plans for development. Uh, this is, I've kind of colored it a little bit more detail. You can see two kind of outdoor yard areas. The one that's kind of centrally located being kind of piles, or at least I believe the plan specifically calls them heaps. Um, to the north is where that auto salvage component is being proposed. And then to the south, which is nearest to Cherry Blossom Way, specifically this location here is the transfer facility. I would also like to identify that the property does have floodplain to the west along the railway bed as well as contributing blue line streams identified in the blue here. So you can see this portion of the stream does have some, some floodplain with it as well as floodplain for natural drainage that is occurring on the site. As well as about a third of the way up from the property, we have this stream that travels from east to west that would also be a contributing stream to that floodplain, which I will get to. The project site is approximately 0.4 miles or about 1,900, 1,900 linear feet of road frontage onto Sims Pike. And there's about the same amount of distance north of the intersection of Cherry Blossom Way and Sims Pike. Sims Pike is their access point. There's, there's no other road to really get there, although on their concept plan, they do show a potential rail stub connection. So it'd be coming off of the large rail system coming to the site, which would then potentially alleviate some of the vehicular traffic that will be moved out shortly and I imagine we'll hear about in this area. So they do propose a rail spur. They've been working with Norfolk Southern and are just kind of looking at this process as well as their long process if they were to develop this property as they've shown. Sims Pike is 18 feet wide. We've reviewed plans on it before, specifically those that are closer to the intersection of Cherry Blossom Way and Sims Pike. And consistently, Sims Pike's width has been a challenge faced by both the residents who use it today as well as the users or people who are interested in using it in the future. Improvements are needed on that road if they were to facilitate, increase activity on the site. And we can request and require that road improvements be along that road frontage. But the question from staff, and I imagine for a lot of us, is the connection from the northern, from the southern portion of this property as it approaches Cherry Blossom Way, how that could potentially be approved? And that is, that is a concern for us is when, you know, consider we, or a factor we consider rather strongly when evaluating this application for a zoning map amendment. The general recommendation to support additional traffic is a 28-foot wide curb to curb with appropriate shoulders as needed. GSC EMA Office, Mike Henigan, also spoke to those same concerns with that road width and having that necessary space for semis to make the proper turning movements without blocking the traffic for extended period of times while they, they make their movements to get on the motorway. If the, yes, if improvements, if it was approved by Planning Commission, then we would be seeing those improvements as part of their development plan review process. And it is recommended by staff that the road be kind of, or that a plan for widening of the road, an extension of any additional sewer services or other facilities be brought to the area prior to large-scale industrial rezoning of the property as this area kind of proceeds into the future. This is the view of the road. So if you are on the northern driveway, which specifically I will step back several slides. Too many slides. Is this rightmost area here. This is their view looking towards the north or towards the Rogers Gap intersection. Uh, you can see. I love it. Uh, it's very on brand for the discussion on roads. This is the intersect, this is the road as it stands right now. You could see a shoulder that has been recently added to. And you can see the property, which I've identified with the pink square, which would be on your guys' right. Looking south, this is that same driveway location. The road does have its, its natural rises and falls as, as all roads do. Um, and you can see in the kind of far, few, far looking south, there is kind of that rise to the road in this instance. Uh, this is their southern driveway. So the one that is on the other side of the, the stream bank that I referenced previously. This is looking south towards Cherry Blossom Way. You can see that there is some built up trees and grasses that are in this property that do kind of, or can impact your site visibility and everything like that. But there has been some clearing, at least in this photo, of that kind of berm area for increased visibility by the county roads department. And then this is the same intersection looking north. Uh, the site would be on the left side of the screen in this instance. And then here's another one, and here's another one, and there's somewhere. This is the last one before we get to discussion of state statute. This is, as you're approaching the project site looking to the north, there is a rise to the road. Uh, this is off-site at this point, but I just, it felt appropriate to show that this road does kind of have its, its rises and falls as you go and up and down it and travel north and south. When reviewing zone change applications, the state has a state statute 100.213, which lists the findings necessary for a proposed map amendment, which states that before any map amendment is granted, the Planning Commission must find that the map amendment is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan or in absence of such finding, that one or more of the following apply and that such finding be recorded in minutes and records of the Planning Commission and fiscal legislative body in fiscal court. Item A is that the existing zoning classification given to the property is inappropriate and that the proposed zoning classification is appropriate. And item B is that there has been a major change of an economic, physical, or social nature within the area involved, which were not anticipated in the adopted comprehensive plan and which have impacted, have substantially altered the basic character of such area. This is the future land use map for the 2024 comprehensive plan. The, it is a little bit hazy, but I will point it out. The urban services boundary is this kind of darkish, pinky purple color that travels along the north boundary of this property, cutting across to the east, dropping down to include that property, property that we just reviewed, and then spreading further to east. Uh, while the area is identified as, as industrial, we look at how industrial is defined in this instance and what the other language we can find in the comprehensive plan. Uh, but it is identified as planned industrial and creek commercial.
Are you saying that that's industrial now?
No.
In the Maroon?
No. The future land use map is a kind of look into the future as communities shift and grow and change to essentially appropriately identify areas which may be suited for different types of uses than what is currently underway. But as it stands, a lot of these properties off of Sims Road specifically are agriculturally zoned at this point. And it would take an action from either a legislative body or the property owner as the applicant to pursue an alternative zone than what is presently on, on the properties. So, not industrial right now. None of those areas in gray, with the exception for those off of Industry Road and closer to the intersection of Cherry Blossom Way and Sims Pike are industrially zoned. So when we're looking at the, the findings requirement, we look at part one and we look at the language and how a future land use industrial is designated. In the comprehensive plan states that this land use category includes the processing of products or raw materials. The associated zoning districts are intended to provide concentrated areas of high-quality employment facilities within the urban service boundaries for uses including light and heavy manufacturing, warehousing and distribution, trucking indoors, trucking indoor screened and outdoor storage and a wide range of other service operations. Areas planned for industrial uses should be designed in a campus or park-like setting with an emphasis on internal connections and access. I would also like to identify that there are pockets of this property that are also called out as creek corridor areas. Those are our floodplains, our 1% annual floodplain, flood chance areas within urban service boundaries. Land in the creek corridor should be designated for conservation use to support long-term community goals for the protection of our waterways and riparian areas. And should, those areas should not be developed except for public uses such as trails, greenways, or ribbon parks. So we've identified this blue line stream that kind of bisects the property as well as that floodplain to the west that if this property were to be rezoned, those areas should not be rezoned to anything other than the creek, the creek corridor equivalent, which would be our conservation C1 zone. Staff does find that the proposed rezoning to the heavy industrial zone aligns with the future land use map as it is an industrial, future land use designation and the zone chosen is the I2 industrial, heavy industrial zone. However, the comprehensive plan does not consist only of this future land use map. We also have goals and objectives informed by community feedback in our two-year-long process to understand, does it meet the community interests? I've highlighted several of them here, starting with the economic goal one, which encourages the diversification of Scott County economy and economic goal four, which encourages the promotion of Scott County's image as a superior location for industrial development. Having options available for your, for employers and residents alike to have locations to achieve more and, and gain skill trains and make incomes that stay in the area, we need to provide options for the community members. Toyota and its industrial affiliates and suppliers make Scott County a location for skilled workers and having spaces for those workers to work keeps that, keeps that resource and that, that knowledge and that skill in the area. The comprehensive plan in particular states that to retain the current ratio of 45.2 acres of industrially, industrially zoned land for 1,000 residents of Georgetown, 367 acres of land would need to be rezoned and developed for industrial uses, uses to satisfy the projected growth of Georgetown between 2024 and 2030. The comprehensive plan does identify that 363 acres of land is already zoned for industrial use but remains undeveloped. However, much of that land is in smaller parcels that is scattered throughout the community that may not be the most appropriate for a user that is looking to have more than just a few small skilled staff. These goals have to do with environmental wellness, which is the protection of creek corridors through zoning and riparian buffers and the protection of environmentally sensitive areas, which staff finds that this does comply with that goal. Goal, environmental goal two has to do with the minimization of the waste produced in Scott County through the reduction of landfill directed waste and the encouragement of recycling and reduction of barriers to recycling-based activities. The proposed use, or at least as shown on the concept plan, could reduce that number of waste, or that volume of waste that is seen in the community. Having areas to recycle things means that you don't have to produce more things. You could just utilize what is already present. And having a facility that specializes in providing that service can ultimately reduce the landfill impact that existing has. But it is also under, it is essential to understand that if the project site is approved for rezoning to heavy industrial users, the applicant may not be the end user on properties. While we ask for concept plans to help us visualize what a use could be on the site, that doesn't always mean that that user is the end user. Sometimes you see projects that get rezoned and then they just, some circumstances happen, economy shift, and then the user doesn't have it, but land goes to market and it sits as a, as a zone in perpetuity unless a clause is put into place that says that it would be a clawback clause, which in this instance, Steph has been putting in for this application and those previously to ensure that we don't just have these floaters of property that have been zoned for so long without anybody having a plan for it. Objective for public facilities 1.3 encourages Objective for public facilities 1.3 encourages that the proximity and access and levels of service for public service providers such as police and fire be considered when reviewing our applications. This is a Scott County area facility. The Scott County Fire Station is in proximity to this area. There's also other service providers and water in this area that could serve the area and provide that necessary services that we do need or that areas need in order to exist safely. Let's see. Goal, transportation goal one talks about efficient transportation systems that are coordinated with the existing needs of the community. The property is located off of that 18-foot-wide road. It's unclear what the road's plan is for scheduled improvements, expansion, or reconstruction. And staff has concerns on putting a heavy industrial user on a road that is insufficient for the existing residences and also for all those businesses on site who will have to use a road that may not be constructed to suit their needs. And then final ones have to do with the environmental health, objective, environmental health goal, objective. 2.3 encourages the proper use, location, and disposal hazardous materials to protect health, air quality, water quality, and environmentally sensitive resources. Again, having those facilities in town that are specialists in their trade can provide a space that is, ensures that whatever is being processed is done in a safe and proper manner. But we are not the environmental enforcement agencies on that one. We collaborate very closely with our environmental groups, our emergency management agencies, to ensure that if an application comes into play, we also take that into consideration. Overall, I'll kind of pause here. Our staff review kind of resulted in a mixed bag of sentiments that agreed with the proposed use or that found that this use may be appropriate in this area, and areas where there were some concerns, where it may not be in alignment. While it needs, while identifies that the cities in the county need to plan for future industrial economy, for the future of the industrial economy and through the strategic rezoning and development of properties for said use, it also identifies that the community and the city of Georgetown place a high value on the protection of waterways and local health. As such, staff makes four findings after all of this consideration. Staff finds that the proposed rezoning for an industrial user fits the industrial future land use designation for this property. There are several goals and objectives which also align with this proposed rezoning. And the areas that are, that should be rezoned to C1 conservation are being rezoned to C1, or are being proposed to C1 conservation. Staff also finds that the concept plan as presented is appropriate for the I-2 heavy industrial zone. Additional ordinances, as previously referenced, do come into play if this individual or if this individual were to pursue this use on this property or another property in Scott County. And after all, after analysis, staff finds that the zoning map amendment satisfies, satisfies the requirements of KRS 100.213. However, condition four speaks to the road condition in this area. Sims Pike is an 18-foot-wide road which does not meet the width standards for industrial development and may not be able to serve the project in its current condition. If approved, the applicant shall be responsible for all off-site road and public water and sewer improvements required to serve that development. However, the fiscal court is the identify, is the agency that is responsible for the road. And so it is, they are in the best position to know what infrastructure improvements are feasible, how that could potentially be achieved to bring that into play. We cannot, as planning commission, compel the public agency to annex a property or to improve their road. It is at their discretionary call to make that determination. And as such, staff's recommendation is to make no recommendation to fiscal court, essentially stating that while it fits the findings requirements, requests, required for the state for a zone change application, we have questions about the infrastructure sufficiency to serve this type of use on the property. And a no recommendation essentially states, we reviewed this item. We identified that there are moments where this may be feasible and moments where it may not. But it is ultimately the fiscal court's determination in all zone change applications that they would be the determining body. And our recommendation is that if it is potentially a priority to improve Sims Pike, to widen it to meet the standards necessary to support the users on the property, that it could be appropriately, it would be appropriate to rezone the property. However, if that may not be an item that is under consideration at this time, then it may not be appropriate. We would not like to put a user on a property that could not support it. But we also, if there are plans to bring something up to the standards that it would be appropriate, then it would be in alignment. If ultimately, the planning commission were moved to approve the application, staff includes three conditions of approval. One, that they adhere to all applicable regulations that our office enforces, including but not limited to the zoning ordinance and the subdivision development regulations. Two, that the areas within the flood plain be rezoned to the C1 conservation zone. And three, which is that clawback clause, which states that if the applicant does not progress to the preliminary or final development plan approval within three years of the zoning map amendment approval, the approved concept plan would expire and that the planning commission, as empowered by the state, may initiate a rezoning of the property back to the A1 agricultural zone or a more appropriate zone, depending upon the circumstances. So, that is all I have.
I have a question for you.
Mm-hmm.
About the flood plain. What happens if we approve something like this to be rezoned and based on the current maps, it doesn't flood? For example, out here on US 25, a development we just approved, and that a flood recently, where they're digging it out, flooded. Is there any recourse to have them redevelop it if the property starts flooding after the fact? I'm just curious, I don't know, that's the question.
I'm going to look to Ben to see about if he can provide any knowledge about flood plains. Since, as our flood plain administrator.
Yeah, Elise, let me ask. You talking about the Grace Baptist Church?
Your property along with it there.
Yeah. The, the foundation filled up with water, but that creek didn't flood.
Yeah, but the water came all the way into that foundation.
Well, yeah, that's going to happen.
But it wasn't just, it was major water coming up there.
Yeah, but water coming into a foundation that's been, is not the same as flood plain water.
But the water came in as a result of a major flood that was ongoing there. That's my question, I'm asking if a property that's being developed, that's not completed, starts to flood. I'm just, I'm just want to know what's, there's any redesign plan that could be asked to do? I'm just curious what happens once something's approved.
I, I mean, I still don't, I don't think there would be any legal ramifications. The flood plain, FEMA flood plain and all that is based on a strict set of guidelines established by the federal government.
Just major flooding is now occurring in all over the United States. And even here, we're having more flooding in places where there are no flood zones, but it's expanding more flooding.
But we are, we are not exceeding 1% annual chance flooding. We have not exceeded anywhere in the county. So, it could be a lot worse, is what's been studied.
It floods once every seven years so bad, it blows that pond down with my house and I'm the neighbor. At that backfield, I was trying to ask a while ago, is to build up what's eroded when it's blowed out every seven years. So, this valley here will take, if that Zone 1 or Zone 2 from the previous meeting goes through, anything comes over that, it's going to affect this place, me, and then this place on top of that as well.
I don't, that answer, that answer.
No, I just, I just wonder what's going to happen as this flooding continues to get worse. What, if someone has not developed a piece of property yet and suddenly there's a major flood, is there, what do we do?
Our, if anything, if changes, federal changes are made, our mapping will be revised and a property would be put into the flood plain. That's, that occurs every so many years.
All right. Elise? Staff have any questions for Elise?
I had a, I had a question, and the last one from Palmer. He said Sims, Industry, and Anderson are all going to be upgraded to industrial roads.
Sims is not going to be inducted.
You don't know that for sure.
Sims was not a road that they were impacting, and so Sims was not going to be part of.
He did say that, so that's why I'm asking.
He evaluated Sims's traffic behavior and it, if that application were to be approved or was approved as part of phase two, then they would be looking at the timing of that signal to allow for more vehicles to clear more efficiently. That did not include widening of Sims Pike. We cannot compel that property owner, who does not touch Sims Pike directly or is not adding to Sims Pike, to improve Sims Pike. That is an off-site thing. We can only ask them to improve what they are impacting directly, what they have direct frontage on.
Yeah, he did, he did say the three, so I was just confirming.
In that instance, improving would be that light timing to make sure that people can clear that intersection, but not like pave up the shoulders or anything like that.
The Anderson and the Industry where they're widening, right.
Anderson and.
If we had approved, but it won't be the case now.
That is correct. And only for their portion that they are fronting.
Right, right.
Any other questions for Elise?
Have we ever, I know this is a little bit change in philosophy maybe, have we ever gone with no recommendation to anybody's knowledge? And has there been any discussion with fiscal court in terms of how they will receive that?
I don't recall one.
Well, you've been here since the beginning of time, so you would know Charlie.
I was, I was.
Father and I came in the same year. I, I don't recall a no recommendation.
I think we did several years ago.
Did you?
Because, yeah, then I went to fiscal court meeting to.
To explain what?
Explain yourself and kiss him.
Well, I'm glad to see the fiscal courts here, several of them are here.
Do you all remember a no recommendation coming to you that, that I gave before you? All right, maybe, maybe I was wrong. Okay, maybe we voted no anyway.
Maybe, yeah. Because the last Sims one, we voted no, I believe. I wasn't here for that.
Yeah, that's what I'm at, Charlie's the only one there. All right, could we have a representative of the developer? John, come right on us.
Never works.
Shame on me.
Saying government technology isn't good.
It isn't, it works.
Three hours is a long time.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen of the commission and all of you here tonight. My name is John Woodall, and I've got the honor and the privilege of representing the applicant before you. Bluegrass Metal Recyclers owner Jerry Joyner is seated over here along with Scott Sprile, also with the company. Bluegrass is a company Jerry started. It's a, he's, it's a veteran-owned company and currently operating a site over in Winchester. I know that most folks here aren't usually involved in this process. And there's a lot of you here, so I'm going to try to make my comments as brief as I can to give you plenty of time to speak. I want to make sure everybody understands what we're here for and what we're not. This isn't the plan you saw first over Legacy Runway. They're, they're to the development plan stage on a 165-acre site with a whole lot of issues. My client, Bluegrass, they didn't just step into this and they're, kind of got their finger in it a little bit and taking the temperature. They already own the property. They're not going anywhere. And they understand, because there was a prior zone change in this area, the company Decraine did. They, this was a while back, and some of you I know remember it. The planning staff had actually recommended disapproval of that zone change. And then the planning commission approved it, I think the fiscal court approved it. But then it, it fell apart at the final development plan stage because the applicant didn't understand that they'd have to, or didn't, I guess, like the cost when it came to them, that they have to improve Sims Pike. Well, that's not the case with, with my clients. They know they have to do that, and they're willing to do that. And when you come in here and when we file an application, one of the things we can do here is we can file a motion, a zone change request, and we can just submit a concept plan. And that means we're going to have to come back after the fact, if we're zoned, and do the, do our planning, our preliminary development plan and our final development plan. Nothing gets filled before that happens. And that's a whole nother set of notices where you all, the public, and I am a big believer in people getting their say, get a, get a come and speak their piece. This particular zone change request and use of this property is also going to involve the board of adjustment because of the conditional use permits that are, that are going to be needed. We filed this because we knew we were going to have to spend a whole lot of money and engineering time figuring out how to widen this road the right way. Your standards call for a 20, in the industrial area, a 24-foot road wide with two inches of, excuse me, two feet on either side, so 28 feet to curb to curb. We understand that. This is a county road. What you've probably heard some of the commissioners say is, they can't tell the applicant, you have to make these improvements off of your property just to get your property zoned. That's the quagmire. And that's why we filed the plan the way we did and didn't go all the way through the process with a final development plan without coming here and this is the procedure we have to go through. File the zone change, and then we're going to have to go ask the fiscal court how we do this road. How does the agreement look like? What, what does the design look like? But it didn't make any sense in the world to go to that step and to make all those expenditures without first going through this zone change process, is what we're here to do. So, why did, why did Jerry buy this property? It's been said, it was said in the, in the other hearing. Because this county made the decision years ago that this area was going to be industrial. That being the case, we understand there's conflicts when that happens. And this is a conflict because of the Sims Pike condition. I use the road sometimes to go to my own property because I don't like to be on 75, I send my own kids down. But it's going to have to be improved before this happens. The use of the property, as some of the photographs that I've showed the commission, you can see what our site looks like over in Winchester, how well it's maintained, and what the interactions there have been. It's been a successful site and a successful operation, and we think this will be. And as to the flood plain issues, we can't build a flood plain. And not without violating federal law. But like I said, there's a lot of steps that are going to have to be taken to get this off the ground. And all of them, pretty much, are going to involve public input. Their, the reason why you all are here is you either word of mouth, or you got a letter, or you saw a sign. Same thing happens with the, with the development plans and with the conditional use permits. And, and that's the way it should be. Like, for instance, and here's the reason why, like Mr. Trailer, is it?
Yes.
On the backside? Landowners like that, who have, who have special knowledge about what this property's done and how it floods, you want to involve them when you're doing your final development plan to avoid conflicts later. That's what smart landowners do, and that's what these guys have done in the past, and that's why they've been successful. So, yep, I haven't, this is unique for me. I've never been in a situation where I really like the planning commission to say yes, but understand, because of this issue and your obligation to all these folks, it's hard to do that. So, you know, no recommendation's kind of the next best thing. From a vote perspective, when we go to fiscal court, it's the same, really kind of means the same thing as a no for us. But at the end of the day, this is a county road. And if we had to sit and wait on the state to fix this road before this property developed, no telling when that will happen. And so that's why my clients are ready to step up and take the bull by the horns, so to speak, and start engineering it and figure out what's going to cost. We fully concur with the staff in terms of their interpretation of this and the comp plan, all the goals and objectives, I know that sounds great. And, but at the end of the day, all it really means is, at some point, when a committee got together in a group and it was finally voted on, the county decided that this is where the industrial development should go. But that doesn't nullify the right of those of you that live in that area and for the roadways to be safe that you drive. And so, I think it's, it was probably said then, when all this was decided, yeah, but when we do that, that road will have to be improved. Or Anderson Road will have to be improved, or Industry Road will have to be improved. All those things were probably said. And here we are. So, we're a responsible user. We're going to be a corporate citizen here. And we just want your permission to get on to the next step. And a set, which is, after tonight, we'll. And we just want your permission to get on to the next step and, and assess, which is after tonight, we'll, we'll get with the fiscal court and, and figure out what's the process going to be to analyze how we improve this road.
I have a clarifying question. And I know the property, property changed hands this letter that you sent to the commission on the, I guess, a month or so ago where it was owned by someone else then, but now they do own it, correct?
Yes, and that, it's, it may be a different LLC, Mr. Jesse or Mr. Jesse, but it's the same owner sitting right there.
Yeah, so they, the Bluegrass Metal Recyclers does already own the property?
Yes, sir.
Okay, was this the letter with somebody else?
Yeah, made a commitment to do that.
But they actually do own it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Does the Mount Sterling or the Winchester? Plant, does it have solid waste management there?
No.
No? Is that, is that something they plan here for this location?
Now, here's, you're going to love this. Jerry's been sworn, but he didn't sign in.
Right. You can get through the lines real quick. Do I need to do it again?
Swearing once is enough.
All right, Jerry Joyner, owner of land 300 Sims. No, we do not have solid waste. And solid waste right now would have to go through a whole different process if that was done. The zoning part of it, again, that we spoke about, right now, that's not in consideration that I know of.
Well, they come across the board when we go. It's one of the things looked at.
If you could.
Wait, wait.
Wait and come back up here.
If I may just clarify from staff's perspective, the applicant provided a concept plan that did include a transfer station on the concept plan. In conversations with the applicant and as was discussed at the workshop on Monday, the applicant at this point has no intention to move forward with that portion of the concept. Staff highlighted it as a potential use within the I-2 zone. However, it would be dependent upon the applicant to come with that development proposal and specifically have also processed through fiscal court's process. I hope that clarifies.
There's a lot of work to do with this and we know that.
Yeah, and this is just, let me remind you again, this is just the, the zone change or the zone map here.
And, and this isn't the first facility. We, in Kentucky, it will be our second. We've got another facility in Jeffersonville, Indiana, another one in Taylor, Michigan as well, that we've went in and actually took properties over, redesigned them and redeveloped them and actually made them, brought the values up there. I'm not, I'm not trying to argue with anybody on that, but I said, we would take this property, we would want to develop it and, and again, bring those standards up as well.
Sir, did you say Jeffersonville, Indiana? Where was the other place?
Uh, Taylor, Michigan. Taylor, Michigan. And they were all, none of the facilities, those four facilities were ever scrap metal, automotive wholesale, anything there. What we are proposing, when we say that about the autos, is not your pick and pull where everybody comes into the facilities and they're out there with wrenches trying to take it off. Ours will be more computerized and dealer direct, so there will not be any kind of public access as far as that goes. Biggest portion that we really liked about this property is, is we do a tremendous amount of work, well, I mean, with Toyota and in the scrap metal book, with the mills in northern Kentucky, western Kentucky and Future Mill and western West Virginia, the Nucor mills. The rail access is, is 100%. That is going to alleviate a lot of the truck traffic that we have. It's going to be going out through NSX that way. We currently operate and have a tremendous facility in Winchester. We do a tremendous amount of work there on a two lane US, or you know, Kentucky State Route 60. I mean, that's a major road and no traffic lights, no issues that we've had, anything like that with, with no rail spur at all. So, again, we know the rail spur was probably one of our biggest issues that we were actually looking for this property along with the fact that it had already been in the future plans to, to be industrial.
Does much of your work go on inside the building as well?
All of the, the non-fairist components will be inside, right? You'll have outside cranes that will be moving the steel metals, but everything that we run pretty much is, is going to be under roof. All stormwater will be maintained on the property and treated and it will be taken care of through the Kentucky Division of Air and Water.
And I want to have a clarifying question for Charlie. Did I hear you say it is very rare that it's come before this commission over the years for no recommendation from them?
I don't recall one. That's not an unheard of thing in general. I just don't remember one here.
Hasn't happened.
It's statute totally admitted.
Yeah, it, it, it is a thing that is appropriate in the statute and in fact, the statute even sets out what fiscal court has to vote then to approve or deny that application. It's typically take, I think, a majority of the full court to take action on it. I guess that the main difference is if you have a recommendation in favor of, it takes effect if they don't take action. Well, if we give no recommendation, it doesn't take effect. They've got to take action and it takes a majority of the full mission.
Well, and the staff dealt with that with their proposed conditions. Is that, if it took effect and this didn't go into effect, then you could rezone it back A1.
And what about the difference for the fiscal court versus a denial in terms of how the fiscal court would handle that?
If we recommend a denial, I think it still takes a majority of the full court to override it and yes, it would still go to fiscal court.
It does.
And they will get the records from here to consider it with whatever it is that they choose to do. Although the main thing they'll have to choose is, is how to get a good road out of this.
Yeah, I get it.
That's, that's the whole, the whole point.
Yeah.
And in 90 days.
I think you got half the fiscal court here tonight.
We have them.
Looks like it.
Any other questions for the owners? I've got one question for Elise or Holden. They've got to come back to board of adjustment for conditional use permit. I mean, it looks like the, which came first, the chicken or the egg? It looks like they could have, in my mind, gone and gotten that before they come before us or?
So obviously conditional uses can only be issued for those that are allowed in the individual zones. Because this is currently zoned A1 and because in conversations with the applicants, they've expressed the list of things that they could potentially do moving forward. We felt it was more appropriate to address the zoning first. Obviously, this type of development as proposed could not happen on a purely A1 zone property.
Right, right, okay. And so then they will just address individual operations with conditional use permits?
That's correct. Again, in discussing this process with the applicant, I think they're going to have every permit possible by the end of this.
All right. Yes, ma'am, just.
Can you come up here?
Just saying, John, are you through?
Why Sims Pike? Why, why that area there?
The, the. Well, as Mr. Joyner said, the, the property there was decided some time ago by former commissioners and citizens that it would, the most appropriate use for it was industrial. Well, it also has a rail spur that goes through it. So, and in being in close, very close proximity to their other location in Clark County, knowing the area, doing business with Toyota, it made sense.
Okay, but it's two and a quarter mile long Sims Pike is and every time.
Ma'am, if you could come up here, please, and state your name.
I'd be surprised.
No, I know, but we need it for the record.
My thing was Sims is two and a quarter mile long, to my understanding, and I've lived up there for 30 plus years. And every time you turn around out there, it's like, it's either one thing or another for the properties that it doesn't have the homesteads on it that is a bigger area than five acres or 10 acres. So, I mean, why Sims? It's got railroad, yeah. What, what are you going to do? Make the whole Sims Road in Rogers Gap and?
No.
Down there, I mean, it affects all these people.
And I think that the map.
Turkey food?
It only goes so far in terms of, of where, what should be industrial and what should, I understand what you're saying.
I feel like we're all being roamed out here from industrial.
It does not have a rail spur on it. There's a railroad next to it. No rail spur.
They're going to put in a railroad.
Another permit.
I just feel like the, our community is trying to be forced out there this winter all these years.
My thing.
Yeah. Yes, sir.
Is John done?
John?
Are you done?
I'm done.
Okay.
My name is Juan Carpio. I live on Sims Pike. I've been, we've been living there for the past 15 years. Enjoy, traffic is horrible. Like the lady said, why Sims Pike? Yeah, Toyota is there, but Toyota knows better or is more in consideration with us. They develop our under direction, not on our side, but on their side. That's what Toyota develops. And if you have a company that want to come here and spend, I understand spending is fine, it's great, and yes, if, if it's in it to my money, that's good. But that needs more consideration with all of us that live in the area for the past years. Some people are here, live over 33 years. They have grandkids. I have my niece and nephews. I have to worry every time they go outside because everybody flies to that road. And imagine by the end, when you get to Cherry Blossom. Right now, when you get to Cherry Blossom and Della Plain, you gotta pray to be able to get out of there. Because the 18 wheeler is not going to wait for you. I've been cut off several times. And imagine it's just one or two. Now, if that company opens, it's going to be worse because as, you're talking about 300 Sims Pike. That's farther in the area. Can you imagine somebody coming that way at 60 mile an hour, which, because I seen it and I, and I seen it and it happens every other day. A 60 mile an hour vehicle and comes in a semi truck. Imagine what's going to happen. Please do not change the Sony. I beg you, do not change the Sony. Live like it is.
Thank you.
I understand that the gentleman has purchased the, the property. Why not develop it for housing?
Because it's not zoned for housing.
But I just, I just say, oh, he can, he can condition it for that. I, I understand. But I'm just saying that if, if, if there are also other options, but not for industrial, not for industrial. Like I said, have more consideration on all of us that live there for so many years.
Thank you.
And also, yes, keep it safe for all of us.
I thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Hang on, hang on one second. I'd like, I would like to say one thing. Raise your hand if you lived here when Sims Pike went on Della Plain and that was it.
Was that?
Okay, that's right. So. There was no Cherry Blossom.
Before there was Cherry, when, that was just a dirt road.
You're, it wasn't a dirt road? It was the.
It was paved.
There was a lot of it that was dirt.
We, we farmed that land in Toyota. The guy had a four wheel drive van.
Right, so.
There's a lot of that road that was dirt.
So, when, when you all talk about the road, I, I totally get it, but, and I'm not saying for against, I just want you to put in your mind that if anybody's to do anything there, do not picture the road like you picture it now.
It's not going to be the same.
It's not even going to be close. Hang on, hang on, hang on. I know, I know that. I'm, I'm not saying, I'm not saying it, but if anything were to happen, that part of the road that the traffic would be on would be, the improvement to would be unbelievable.
We got to be clear too. That one road will come out to an intersection that splits two roads. It comes into a double road right there.
Yes, and that's a huge problem.
And that's the problem.
Yeah.
Yes, that, that neck right there is terrible.
Yeah.
And we tried to address that at another thing and I noticed they haven't done anything in that corner that they were supposed to do.
They have not.
None.
All right, if we could hold down the, the chit chat and let the speakers at the podium speak, please.
So I'm, my name's Brian Trailer. I do own four pieces of property right across from this place. All that beautiful mowing that was done by me. I own 299 Sims, 325 Sims, 327 Sims and 331 Sims. That's 65 acres there. So I'm going to be the one more directly affected than anybody in this room, panel included. That's why I brought up that solid waste question, because it was a question. I don't want to smell that in my front yard. And I'm sure, and I'm sure that I'm the gatekeeper of Sims Road. Where I'm at, everybody goes past my house. They live in Scott County and they can travel 20 to 30, 45 minutes past ours, this property, what you bought and what I own. So I don't know if, I mean, I, I just want to know, that's going to, what, what, so I'm just asking, what will this do to the property value, not only for just myself that's ultimately affected, but the people that would have to drive past that and live beyond, you know? Will their value go down or, or will it go up? So that, that's my main focus why I'm here tonight and I know I'm not the only one here that's worried about my property's value today and what it will be 10 years from now.
Sir, what was your first name?
Brian.
Brian, you know, we can't answer that question. I don't think anybody can. What property values are going to be 10 years from now? It just.
I think we've probably got a clue what it'll be next to the junkyard. And in all fairness. In all fairness. In all fairness, has anybody brought in any kind of information from the Winchester plant or any of the other four plants? Hold on. In the last 10 years that those plants have been there, that their property values has went up or down? I mean, can we compare anything? That's all I have. I don't want to take more time unless.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you.
My name is Lindsay Cruz. It's my husband Cage Cruz. We live about a mile down on the right from where this property is located. And I do want to say I appreciate the thoughts on wanting to be a good neighbor, but I'm pretty disappointed that I didn't get a letter from you guys with the intent. I had to stop on our busy road in a really bad spot to read the signs to figure out what was going on. So I'm a little disappointed about that, but I'm going to stick to my letter so that I don't get too passionate about this. We asked that you guys would vote no on this. This will have a grave consequence for our road and our community and here are some reasons why. Sims Pike cannot handle the heavy industrial traffic that this will bring. It's going to back up the road for school buses, just like everybody's talked about. But also, we try to go down Rogers Gap if that's the other option for us and most of the time the train's in the way, usually when I'm in a hurry. But not that, but let's talk about the company that wanting, is wanting to move in. If you look online, the Winchester company, they have 17 employees. So when you talk about bringing jobs in, I feel like from what I found online, we could do better than 17 jobs. But the lot, this is a lot of land for that many jobs, but what will the water table look like? How will they contain the runoff? What will the contamination look like? We run livestock right down the road, as do many others on this street. We have a well. Our kids play in the creek. And I know at Ms. Karen's house, they play in the creek down there. Kids all the time are. So what is this going to look like from an environmental hazard? How are we going to go from heavy industrial to a conservation, you know, from runoff? I don't, I don't understand that. But I would like for you guys to all in the room, Google stuff recycling Winchester, Kentucky and look at the pictures because it will devastate you at what will move in on our road. I do want to let you know that in 2018, the company in Winchester had a fire that burned for three days and used an estimated 1 million gallons of water. 35 different agencies had to respond to this and this was in a local Winchester newspaper. In 2019 and 2018, they were fined for failure to, or failing to remain in the limits of iron, zinc and lead in their runoff. So huge environmental hazards. They had fines for no groundwater protection plan. So I would ask that you guys would really, really do your homework.
Did you say lead? I wasn't sure I heard you correctly.
What was it?
Did you say iron, zinc and lead?
Lead, yes, correct. This is a copy of the prime farmland use that was shared at our agricultural stakeholder meeting. This property is in the prime agricultural section. So are we going to take a piece of prime farmland that is on the map from Scott County and turn it into a heavy industrial plant for waste from other places? Is that really our best use of farmland? I understand, I could understand if you want to rezone it for something different, but heavy industrial with the risk of environmental hazards and what, you know, we, we're happy with our little road. We've got the, the porch, we've got the Happy Spot Pet Resort, and just to go ahead and clarify too, I talked to Ms. Julie Singleton who owns the Happy Spot. She's in complete agreement with us. She does not want this on her road. So, you know, we are growing. Our road is turning into something really special. So I just ask that you please, please don't take that away from us. Do you have anything else?
Um, another quick thing, the salvage yards are really almost like kind of a loophole because land. because landfill is required to have barriers. They would have a primary and a secondary liner installed to contain everything. But salvage yards are not required to have that. They do have to have groundwater protection plans, but they are not required to put in a primary and secondary liner to contain, not runoff, but things leaching into the soil. So, that's state law. That's the way the state made it or whatever. It's not, you know, anything that counties enforce or anything like that. So, because of that, they just fall into a separate category where they're not required to have as much. Yet, we know, you know, what, everybody's been to a salvage yard, you know how much material leaks out of vehicles? It's either damaged vehicles or old vehicles.
Just look at the pictures.
That are being crushed. So, I think that we need to keep that in mind too, that the state does not require them to have the same amount of containment that a landfill does, even though most of the waste in a landfill is organic matter. This is not, but not required to have the same level. I know there's a old salvage yard that closed in 2007 in New York that's going through remediation right now. They're restoring it, and it's a twenty-million-dollar project, and they're having to remove all the dirt and bring in new fill. And that one's been closed for a long time, but that's just, you don't have the same containment level.
Thank you.
My name is Greg Chekall. I live on three eighty-four Sims Pike. It's the property directly on the north side of this. And I'm just here to strongly oppose this rezoning from Ag A1 to heavy industrial and the approval of a scrap metal recycling center slash junkyard at this location. You know, kind of as an aside, a couple of years ago, you know, as was mentioned, the D Crane Company was trying to buy this same property, and it was denied. And it seems here we are now, trying to defend something which, in my view, is far worse in terms of impact to our community. And as far as the, you know, the gentleman pointed out that maybe D Crane didn't understand the road issues, they did. They understood the road issues. But anyway, so first, this proposal is gonna cause a measurable decline in our surrounding property values. And in looking at like studies that I could find online, like appraisals in municipal planning departments, basically, they show that industrial use, especially heavy industrial, particularly scrap yards depress residential values by twenty percent or more. And who will buy a home next to an industrial junkyard? Who here would honestly wanna live by one? And it's not just a personal loss to me, because I just built an eighty-thousand-dollar deck on my house that's gonna look right at the north end of that where they're planning to put the junk cars or whatever. And it's like, like I said, it's not a personal loss to me, but it's a long-term loss to the community and our quality of life in general. You know, simply put, industrial development needs to be put in industrial zones. Second, there are serious environmental risks. Scrap yards, junk yards can create hazardous runoff, various oils, antifreeze, battery acid, other automotive fluids. There's a creek that runs behind the property. Animals live there, eat there, drink there. I sit there and do my prayers in the morning on the deck, watching the birds and great blue herons go back there, frogs, minnows, snakes. Anyway, contamination could affect a much wider area than just the site itself. And the cost to clean up something like that, I guarantee it's gonna fall on taxpayers. Is there any kind of intention, or has there been any kind of environmental impact study prior to even thinking about buying this place? Third, the increase in heavy traffic, everybody's brought that up, but it brings more noise, road wear, safety hazards that are not, you know, this road's not designed for industrial use, it never was. And if you look at the beginning of the road, as soon as you pull in, right past where the old Dela Crane crosses, there's a sign that says, "No Through Trucks." So, at some point, somebody realized, this isn't this type of road. And so, anyway, just the noise, the engines, the machinery, crushing cars, the dust, the dirt, it's gonna, you're talking a permanent change of a quality of life for every nearby resident, especially Mr. Trailer, my friend over here, Steve Mullenix. And I'm looking at, you know, a property value, probably a loss of property, my property value easily fifty thousand dollars to a quarter-million-dollar place, and my buddy over here, he's got, you know, a half-million-dollar-plus place, he's gonna lose a hundred thousand property value right off the top. So, anyway, so then fourthly, this proposed rezoning is inconsistent with protecting the general welfare and our quality of life for the residents. And it requests a proposal to take A1 agricultural land, good land. Ed Moore was still cutting hay off that property a couple of weeks ago. And you're making the leap that, you know, before it was just light industrial to this D Crane, and now you're wanting to make the leap to go from Ag to heavy industrial. The only heavy industrial properties around here are Toyota and Johnson Control, as far as I kinda know. And it's just in direct conflict with the residents who moved here with the expectation. I moved here thirty-plus years ago, and I moved here with the expectation that my quality of life and rural living, you know, provides, or, you know, the area provided. And it sets a dangerous precedent, I think, that, you know, to spot zone something that undermines basically our little neighborhood and community on the whole. So, I just urge you to reconsider, you know, not, and, I'm sorry. I just urge you to consider the short-term, not the short-term interest of just a single applicant, but rather the long-term well-being and the quality of life of this neighborhood, its environment, its property values, and its safety. And if I may, I'd like to quote from the zoning, your zoning board, Article 1.3, and I quote, it says, "In establishing zoning districts, this ordinance seeks the general welfare by designating sufficient space for all necessary uses of the land, by protecting the permitted uses in each such a district from the undesirable effects of conflicting uses, by ensuring the stable value of all permitted development." So, this proposed rezoning, especially with it's intended to heavy industrial scrap metal recycling plant, it creates an incompatible and undesirable effect that does not protect our neighborhood or ensure those property values. So, for these reasons, I respectfully request that you deny this rezoning request and reject scrap metal recycling, along with any future proposals to rezone this property industrial. Thank you for your time and your service to the community.
Let me remind anyone that's gonna speak, we've been here a long time, and we may be here a lot longer, but let's not continue repeating the same thing over and over again. We've heard about the traffic, the quality of life on Sims Road, we don't deny that, but let's, if you've got something new to say, let us know, but we don't need to hear the same thing over and over. We, I don't think you all wanna be here hours later, and we certainly don't. Yes, ma'am.
I apologize.
That's fine.
I do have a different issue.
I'm sorry, I just, I had it written down.
No, you're fine, Grace.
It was easier for me to just...
Yeah, no, no problem at all. I just wanted, yes, ma'am.
Julie McClanahan. I live on Rogers Gap, so I have a completely different kinda interest in this. Mine's more based on the railroad. I'm directly across from a railroad crossing that's on my neighbor, Ms. Karen's property. She's lived in the area for eighty years, eighty-plus years. Her farm, the railroad actually bisects her farm, and it blocks her crossing, giving her access to her cattle on the back of the farm on a regular basis. So, with the increased train traffic, I know we said that, you know, they're gonna have a lot of train traffic, so there's not gonna be as much semis on the road. Okay, well, when I leave my house and come home, I travel Sims Road primarily because I can't get across the crossing on Rogers Gap Road. The almighty railroad blocks that crossing for hours at a time. I am not making that up. They block the crossing for hours. So, I have to go another way. If you call and complain, they say, "Is there another way around?" And you go around. You call the sheriff, there's nothing we can do. We'll write them a ticket, but their lawyers will just take care of it. There's nothing we can do about it. So, now, when we go the other way, we're gonna have semi trucks lined up. So, I mean, it's kinda cutting access off everywhere. But the noise also, I mean, we have constant trains sitting on the track, clanking, they change drivers, she lets them change drivers at her crossing for the railroad. They sit all hours of the night with the train running on the tracks. I mean, it's loud. I can hear it from my bedroom. So, that's another concern of mine, is just the increased train traffic. They, you know, they typically block the crossing, it's kinda irritating, because it usually only has like one or two cars that they block the track with. I don't know why they can't just pull up a little bit further and let people by, but they don't. So, I mean, I'm, you know, it's just more trains, more traffic, more disruption of our country living that we wanna preserve. So, that's kinda my issue of it.
Thank you.
I have one more point I wanna make. They also, if they get access to the railroad hub, all of you, or a lot of you in this room, were at all the dump meetings. I know the dump wanted to get access to the railroad to haul in trash. If they start hauling in solid race, it's gonna be sitting all through Georgetown for everybody to smell. And they didn't say it wasn't gonna happen, they said, "It's not gonna happen right now."
So, my name's Danielle Maton. I actually live off of Rogers Gap on Burgess Smith, so I travel Sims Pike and Rogers Gap every day. I'm gonna approach this from a little different perspective. Yes, I don't want this in my backyard, but I'm also in the healthcare field. I am on call. We have an OB-GYN on my road. I have a daughter who is a NICU ICU nurse up at UK. We also have a scrub tech that works in the ORs up there. I'm in open-heart surgery. I get called out, I need to be in Lexington within thirty to forty minutes to be in the operating room. I can't go down Rogers Gap because of the train, and now I'm gonna be sitting also on Sims Pike with traffic, and that also goes for incoming healthcare for people who live in the area. We can't get fire trucks in, we can't get ambulances in. A minute or two makes a difference in somebody living or dying, and getting that healthcare to them is vital. So, from my standpoint, yeah, I don't want this in my backyard. I have a farm, I have animals, I have kids. But more than that, I really worry about the health of our community, and I worry about those that do healthcare, being able to get to where they need to be so that they can provide that care for people who need it.
Thank you, Danielle.
Hello, I'm Sherri Beth Mullenix, and I live at three six five Sims Pike, which is right next door to Brian Trailer and right across from the, this proposed development. My heart is with everybody here that we don't wanna live across from a junkyard, but I know you don't vote with your heart. So, I'm hoping that you will vote based on the comprehensive plan. That brings me to the road improvements. I know that the developer is plant is prepared to pay for road developments, but they are only allowed to pay for their side of the road, correct? So, we need ten more feet on our road, and they're allowed to pay for the side that their property is on.
They can pay.
It's on our side, so it's gonna have to be on their side.
So, then, is that gonna be then the county's responsibility, which then comes back on the taxpayer, the taxpayers? And I'm pretty sure that the comprehensive plan says that it would be a violation for the taxpayers to have to pay for any part of this.
Holden, would you or anybody on the staff like to address the road width? Will they just, if it has to be twenty-eight feet curb to curb, or they only can do fourteen feet?
So, I'll let the applicant kinda discuss the bulk of this. To clarify, from planning's perspective, we could only require improvements along the frontage where it abuts the property. However, it's our understanding and what we've seen in practice is through public-private partnerships, a developer can improve lengths of road beyond what is just adjacent to their property. The question that would come up at that next step is, how much right-of-way does the county own for that county road? Theoretically, and again, I'll let the applicant speak for what they, you know, would or would not be willing to do, but theoretically, the applicant could improve as much of that roadway within the existing right-of-way as was necessary to facilitate the use. To echo the, kind of the sentiments of the community though, yes, the expectation and why staff was unable to make a positive recommendation for this application is that the current standards, the current standing of the road would not support this, and it would be inappropriate to expect the county to pick it up all by themselves. I'll look to the applicant. Do you have anything?
But like Brian was just saying, on his side of the road, they've got utility easements. So, in order to get the full legal width of the road, it would have to come out of your property.
That's not exactly, that's true to a degree. And if I may approach the thing here, there's a gentleman sitting right over here in a blue shirt, he's gonna be directly affected by this. The water line crosses right in the middle, right here, this valley, these trees right here is the water. This is my property, one of them here, this is the lake that blows the dam out, puts the water through here. Now, the water line, I have it on this side of my side of the road, here, in this valley, it crosses the road in the valley. So, even they, you know, wouldn't have to be able to widen on their side here, but the young man on the wall in the blue shirt, Jay Lightman, who owns this right here, his house sits a hundred and something feet off the road, and you're gonna come thirty feet in his front yard, and he's gonna have a house sitting right on top of a twenty-eight-foot high level semi.
That's what I was asking.
Yes.
That, we can't force anyone on the other side of the road to give up your property to widen that road.
Yeah. I have a water line, so it'd be hard to mess with that.
Yeah.
Jay does, it crosses in my valley, and Jay has it, he'll be the one to set, if he gotta go to his side then.
But it would...
And his house would be like, right here on twenty-eight-foot road.
It'd have to be condemnation, I mean, just like any public project, it would have to be condemnation. Private people can't take anybody's property. We can't take anybody's property. That's why this would go to fiscal court. And if it could be worked out, it gets worked out. If it doesn't, it's not gonna be built.
It's a development plan issue. If we were there, I'd have an engineer here that would've worked all that out and explained it. But we're not there yet, that's the whole point. We're just asking for this zone change based on what the comp plan says.
All right.
Yes, sir. I own the corner of Sims and Dela Plain. I own twelve-hundred-and-eighty feet going down Sims Pike. My property's not for sale.
Didn't say anything about your property.
No, 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 we're not gonna support it.
Well, it'll have to widen on his side, is what he's saying. When it crosses the J, it'd have to come on down his property next. That's what he's just trying to convey, I believe. He's not interested in losing no ground. That's what you're trying to say, right?
And may I say this? This was given to us two years ago. We stood in the same venue of what would be done to widen, to improve the roads. It is dated November the ninth, 2023. We're still waiting for it to be done.
Yeah.
We're still waiting.
Is that the development we were talking about?
It's never been done.
Online transport.
Yeah.
But it's, I mean...
It's another development that never went through.
But what I'm saying is, we're being told things are gonna be done, but never happens.
There's been no improvement on that road.
Right, we don't know what to do with it.
Staff, can you give a short update on that one, actually? They recently came in with a, yeah, final development plan, and staff just signed off on that new development plan. So, the improvement specific to that development should be moving forward very quickly.
Because they couldn't start them until they had approval on the final development plan.
You can't begin the construction until you've finalized with us.
Yes, sir. This is a question for Mr. Charlie, I think. If this was to pass tonight, and... If this was to pass tonight, and then it passed the fiscal court to get the full 28 foot, then they would just enact eminent domain.
Well, the applicant couldn't do it, certainly. We didn't, but yes, the county would have to do that.
Yeah. But if the fiscal court approved it, that would be the, where you would gain the 28 foot.
Either that or just outright purchase.
Purchase or.
But you all obviously have to agree to.
Yeah. That's, I was on the question.
Kevin Farley, I live on Davis Turkey Foot, so I'll say, I'm like everybody else, I travel that road a lot. Only thing I want to touch on is the traffic part of it, and I don't want to rehash it. But Mr. Trailer, Mullenets, the Hammond's, myself, we come up and down that road, and you saw the whoop-de-dos in the picture. A lot of times you'll come, and I know it's going to be widened. I, I hear it and I agree with it. But I'm generally loaded when I come that way with a 25-foot goose neck. He's loaded with a semi. And if those trucks have to come across, which they're going to, they're going to come into my lane, I can't stop in 10 feet. I don't know what Brian does. Mullenets pulls trailers all the time. He operates a business out of there. So just remember, don't think of cars and trucks and stuff like that. There's a lot of farmers still out there. Markwells, they have equipment on that road all the time. And a semi, if you're coming up over those hills, it's really hard to see. It's pretty dangerous already. Road widening won't fix that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Me again.
All right. Take me again.
All right. There's, there's, there's about eight businesses on Sims Road.
Chuck, can you give your name, please?
I'm sorry?
Your name, please.
John Bishop. Some are small businesses, some are going to be bigger businesses. Not approving this next to, if you could see that rail area there, there's about seven lanes that store cars and parts coming in and out, going to the railhead. This whole property is going to be set up as a exit kind of a thing. And they were talking about trucking this in. It's a transfer out. It's not something that we're going to pile up stuff. It's kind of disheartening a little bit because we're, we're in an industrial area. Toyota's right there. We've got IHE. We've got all these other places that are producers. But one of the other things that they produce is scrap. And the easiest way to get the scrap out is by rail. Currently, part of that goes through green metals on the other side of the track doing the same thing. All that we're doing is considering using the, the proposed area. You know, they were talking about the landfill. What are all the different ones that David mentioned? That was proposed uses for that property because that's about all you could do with it. You know, it's next to a flood plain. There's only limited access parts of it. You're not going to plant a crop down there. You're not going to keep animals down there because it'll drown. So there's only limited spots of that, I think it was 42 acres out of the 53, they could even use. And they haven't developed anything or designed anything because they want input from other people to see what can be done with that property. So in theory, this is prime farmland that nobody will ever farm. Next to a multimillion dollar railhead that was put there to expedite cars going out, parts coming in.
We need more train traffic.
And then on the other end of that road is a, is the, the second Scott County landfill. And when, when a county or city or municipality does a landfill, they don't have to follow exactly the same codes as everybody else does. The one on Payne Street, I don't know if you all know about that one or not. Then there's one at the end of Sims. And then there's one on Double Cover. Out of the three disposal facilities, the one on Double Cover was the one most legal. So what we're wanting to do is we're wanting to be able to transport recyclables safely out and keep them from going into the landfill. Let me show you. Right here? Right here? Let's run that. I can't recover any of the recyclables. Everything that I have goes into the landfill. I would like to have a facility at one time to do it, but it leaves behind the opportunity to take the metals, farm fencing, metal off the buildings, some of these old trailers that's been around a little too long. That would give me the opportunity to save it from going to the landfill. So nobody wants a landfill. And I might add, over on Houston, I developed, Simply Green developed the transfer station permit over there. I got opposition from everybody. Oh, we're going to pile it up. It's going to smell. Well, now that we shut the landfill down, I think we're pretty glad that we got it. Because that's our only avenue to get garbage out of Scott County, that transfer station. Now, this metal recycling facility, they're talking about having it enclosed in overhead trains and all that stuff. Sounds horrible, but it's going to be during working business hours. And it's going to redirect the flow mostly rail. And we can assist other businesses in Scott County. Toyota, IHE, Louisville Forge, all these different places that has all these heavy trucks going up 75. We can put it on rail, go the other way. Anyway, just saying no, just because this is a nice neighborhood and I love it. I don't mean no disrespect. Drive down Sims Road, there's a car been sitting in the front yard 15 years. Where's the community respect? I get it. Nobody wants a, a toilet in their backyard until after lunch. You know what I'm saying? Nobody wants a landfill. But where are you going to put it? Nobody wants to process all this stuff. But where are you going to do it? The transfer station on Houston, the only problem that we did with it is it's too small.
Please, please let him speak. No one interrupted you all.
It's too small. And I didn't foresee it. And when I started with that, everybody said, okay. He ain't got the money to do it. So I partnered with Rumkey. And they did a bang-up job, but it's still too small. It won't handle all the flow. They can't pull out all the recycling that they would like to. It's too small. They bought a property next to it. They're going to try to separate it out a little bit. But this facility here will end a lot of the road traffic that people are concerned with, and they don't realize it. You know, going out by rail, not coming in by rail, going out. Trash, out. Not piling it up. Build a transfer station. How bad does this smell? It smells like yesterday's garbage. You know why? It was yesterday's garbage. Not three months ago, yesterday's garbage. It was out. You want to talk about smell? Right in that curve, right in front of Toyota, sewage treatment plant. It smells awful. But you got to have it. Can you imagine operating that plant? Half of that, is it Lanes Run?
Industrial.
Lanes Run buys a portion of the treatment capacity to operate Lanes Run. And that operates Toyota and Lanes Run. Talking about building houses up Sims Road, there's not an infrastructure for the sewers. So where's it going to go? You know, agriculture for a purpose on that property is really not a feasible thing. Half the hay gets washed out. You can't raise animals on it. You know, who's going to raise animals with a flood plain down the backside? They're not going to put any buildings there.
One minute.
Hey.
All right, listen, I've talked too much. Appreciate you guys. But there's a lot more to think about.
Thank you.
And I don't like it.
Thank you, John.
Okay. Julie McClanahan and I have just a couple of quick points. Mr. Bishop said himself that he originally had a recycling transfer station.
Wait a minute. What, what does this have to do?
Well, give me a second.
Okay.
He, he said that he had to change his plans because he now has to haul it to the dump. So my point is, once you zone this property, industrial one, you're never going back from that. That's what it is. Anyone can buy it. They can change their mind on what they're going to do on it. This guy can sell tomorrow, and if you rezone it industrial, it can become anything. Please keep that in mind.
If he still has to come back here.
I'm aware of that.
For a conditional use permit.
I'm aware of that. But once it's zoned industrial, there is no going back. And they got a very good hay crop this year off of that farm. And there's a lot of people that run animals.
And again, that has nothing to do with what we're talking about.
It does, because it's currently agriculture. It is currently zoned agriculture.
Okay.
And if someone owned it, they would use it for agriculture.
And why do you want to say? Have anybody else?
Are you ready for a moment?
We have a.
I'll be real fast. I'm Bob Vella. I just want to say that it seems like they purchased the property to create a wedge so that they could do what they wanted to do. Because they're putting themselves in a position, you say, they tell you they own the property, and so they want to do this, and you kind of, it's kind of hard to say no when they've already bought the property and they've invested in it. So that's kind of, they're trying to put you in a tough situation to say no.
If I could just clarify, it's irrelevant whether or not they already own the property or if it's contingent upon the change. Please don't, please don't. I'm talking about our decision. It's irrelevant whether they own the property. Please let me finish. Or if it is contingent upon this passing. That piece of it, us saying what we are and aren't required to do, there are certain things that we are required to uphold. I know that Mr. Jesse has a different opinion than me, but legally, we are bound by a certain set of zoning ordinances and laws. We are required to follow those so that we are fair and consistent to each individual applicant and landowner. And I know Mr. Jesse says, oh, well, people have not done that and appealed it. Well, I could commit murder and get away with it, but that doesn't make it okay. Secondly, let me just add, before we wrap up the public hearing, please don't interrupt me. Secondly, I will just add, we've had two situations tonight that are in the same vicinity, but offer two different situations. One, already zoned industrial, bringing 2,000 jobs. That wasn't okay. This one, not yet zoned industrial, bringing 17 jobs. Those requirements are also not okay. So I guess my question I would pose is, where is it okay? If we're trying to preserve agricultural land, as I said earlier, then we should approve things that are already zoned industrial if we don't want to have future things zoned industrial. So those are my comments.
Yes, sir.
Yes, my name is Dennis Pennington. I'm just, I'm opposed to this project, this rezoning. And I think most of the people here are. So I hope that you all will vote it down.
I'm Kenny Van Hees. I used to live down on Double Cover, so I've traveled this road a lot. And the landfill, I know when it was open, I kept nails in the tires all the time from people, stuff falling, debris falling off trailers. And so that's another concern. Thank you.
Wait, wait a minute. This young lady was here before you.
Hi, my name is Kami Stanger. Y'all don't know me. Y'all probably will never know me. I'm sure that I'm closer in age to your kids than to most of you on this panel. But I just wanted to go ahead and kind of raise the question of why we're so willing, I guess, to talk about and have the conversation of changing the ag zones. When, when we just faced this last proposal, we were so opposed, and it was in fact used as an opposition, that we need to use this industrial land because we want to save farms. So I guess why are we so willing to change the zoning to now be industrial heavy when previously we were not on that page and we wanted to stay industrial in order to save agriculture? It just feels like on one side, we were attempting to save agriculture in our first, you know, proposition, but then in this go-around, we no longer are attempting to save that ag land, and we're very willing to rezone it. So I guess I would just consider.
We haven't taken a position on it. So we're not saying we're willing or unwilling to do it.
I, I would just consider though, kind of just how you specifically were speaking about your position and about how.
No, that wasn't my position. I was making the point that, I was making the same point you're making, that we just had an opportunity to take current industrial.
I would appreciate if you didn't interrupt me, especially as how you've corrected all of these people not to interrupt them. So again, I'm raising the question of why is it okay for us to go ahead and consider rezoning for this project when you specifically said that it's your job not to?
No, I didn't say that.
No.
So I'm sorry if you interpreted my words that way. What I said was, if I can correct my words.
Yes, please do. I honestly would appreciate it.
I said, in both cases, people were opposed. One, I can't remember who it was, someone stood up here and said, we need to put industrial in industrial. Well, that's what we had before us for the first two hours of this meeting. And I made the comment during that, this is an opportunity to save agricultural land because this is already zoned industrial. What I was bringing up, and I've not taken any position on this, none of us have taken a position publicly on it. I am posing a question and stating the fact that it doesn't matter, I don't think, if it's currently zoned industrial or not, people still oppose it. I'm not taking a position on this item at all.
I think I'm just confused as to like how the stance can change so quickly.
No, stance didn't change at all. It.
Or I guess.
Excuse me. It changed in 2024 when we redrew all of the maps, future land use maps. And at that time, the city, the county, and the planning commission said, where's the best places for industrial? And this was one of them. We said we don't want industrial in certain areas. Lexington Road and all. And it was, we wanted to keep it agriculture.
I, I think what she's, doesn't quite understand.
Yeah, no, please.
So the other plan, it, it was just about the plan. It was already zoned. I just didn't like the plan. Doesn't mean I don't think there's industrial there, but I didn't like the plan. This is just to change the zone. So they are totally different.
And I understand that. I think I'm just confused as to like how we can go about changing, especially just because we're bringing up, and specifically this meeting, of protecting farmland, and it just seems like this plan is totally taking that away, seeing as how Lindsay brought up the fact that we are talking about a zone of prime ag land that we are now going to change to heavy industrial. So I guess for me, again, I have no dog in this fight. I live in a, in a neighborhood, but I would just appreciate the consideration of not going ahead and rezoning on the basis that earlier today, we talked about how rezoning is not a part of this jurisdiction. But thank you for your time. I appreciate it. It doesn't need to be an argument.
Thank you.
I hope you have a lovely evening.
We appreciate you.
Thank you.
And just for the, and just for the record, most every meeting, we hear something about changing agriculture land to something.
Absolutely. And I don't deny that.
It's not just this meeting.
I'm, I'm just specifying this meeting and these conversations because that's all I have to quote today.
Understand.
Awesome. Thank you so much for your time.
Yes, sir.
I just have one thing to say. The complicating factor, I think, in a lot of these decisions that you're making and having struggles to make, is that there's not infrastructure in place. You decide to make a zone change before the infrastructure's in place, a plan before the infrastructure's in place. Put the infrastructure in place, or if it isn't, don't do anything because you need the infrastructure first.
My name's Sharon Pennington, and I live on Sims. I've lived on Sims for 28 years. Okay? So what I want to talk about, Georgetown's an historic town, correct? We love Georgetown. Beyond us is an RV park on Rogers Gap. I live on Georgetown, and I see the campers that come up and down Sims Pike to go to that RV park, or the residents that have been at that RV park coming down Sims. And they love the country. If you're a camper, you're going to be out in the country. Do we want our neighbors from Ohio, Indiana, Michigan, coming down Sims? And what they're going to be exposed to, the closer they get to Cherry Blossom, a big facility that has trash? Now, trash is money to people. Absolutely. Trash is money to businesses. They make money. But do we want to put those neighbors that are visiting our estate in jeopardy of their safety coming down Sims? Let alone all these neighbors, including myself, that live on Sims, in jeopardy? I have three grandsons that come up that road from school, on a school bus. Do I want them to be exposed to that? No. They're out in the country? Yes. But should all of us have to be exposed to that? No. Toda is our neighbor. We both retired right over there at Toda, and some of you all did too. So we, we know what expansion means and what growth means for Georgetown. We love the opportunity for Georgetown. But I want you all to consider the neighbors that are visiting Georgetown. How many come up and down Sims? And what they're going to be exposed to? They see farmland right now. They see homes. You know, it's, it's a nice area to be in. We're convenient to the interstate. That's why that RV park's up there. But again, don't take Sims away from the neighbors that live on Sims and have the entitlement of a business, of a scrapyard business, of a junkyard business. That business does not belong on Sims. And the jeopardy, and we've spoke about it several, every one of us has stood up here, the safety of the people here in Georgetown. It's just not the people on Sims. You have people on Sunday afternoons that want to take a country drive. And where do they come down? Down to Sims. They go to Rogers Gap. They go to Turkeyfoot. They go up to Sadieville. You know? So please consider, when you make that decision, if this company has the opportunity for the growth in Georgetown, don't put it on Sims. There's other areas for that to be. And, you know, they did purchase the land. I just found that out to myself last month. I know what they paid for it. They paid for it, probably for what I could almost get out of my farm. But now, if that company goes in on Sims, I'm not going to get that kind of money out of my farm. So again, I'm not rehashing anything, you know, going on and on about. But please, don't take Georgetown's historic, historic area and our visitors coming from other states that travel down that road to have to be exposed to something directly to them. It'll be detrimental.
Thank you, Sharon.
Thirty seconds. Roy Cornet. I served on the comp plans, Pity. It was done in '24. So I'm one of the guys that, on that comp plan, said it'd be industrial area. And I'm sure these guys bought the property based on that comp plan. And so that ship has sailed.
All right. Have you got anything new to say, Juan?
Yeah.
Because we don't want to rehash the same thing.
You can send Sims Pike. This is where the Exine Road starts. You go through Sims Pike. And we've seen a lot of people, they take Sims Pike, Rogers Gap, and they go to Double Cover to Sadieville because they like to see Charlie's farm. It's a very nice area.
Thank you. All right. I think we've discussed this one.
I'd like to make a motion, Charlie.
All right.
A motion of denial. ZMA-2025.
Wait, wait a second. I need to come out of public hearing. First, before we make a motion. So we come out of our public hearing, and now we all take a motion.
My motion is ZMA-205-23, a denial of zone change based on safety, infrastructure concerns based on the staff, environmental concerns based on the people who live in that area. And I have certainly enabled to speak on my behalf, under my name. My name is Harold Dean Jesse, and this is my motion.
All right. Now, let me add. The staff had come to us with, the staff makes no recommendation. So.
He's just referring to the infrastructure deficiencies that they mentioned in the statement.
Yeah, yeah. So. I'm at a loss here. Do we approve the no recommendation, or?
No. A motion to deny.
Motion to deny.
Deny the zoning. No zoning change.
The staff's no recommendation was based off the infrastructure, right?
Yeah, to uphold the recommendation, the motion would have to be to give no recommendation. But the motion is to deny. So that's basically going against sort of the recommendation of staff.
Right. But then it still have to go to fiscal court either way.
Everything we do in a zone change goes to fiscal court or to the city.
Well, I think the community would be glad to see what the fiscal court would do in this case. So let's see what they do. But I've made my motion.
Thank you. Mr. Jesse has made a motion to deny based on infrastructure.
Safety, infrastructure, environmental concerns.
I second the motion.
Just a second. I can't write that fast. All right. Second, Ms. Adair. All right. Mr. Jesse.
Your man.
Yes. Yes. Okay. Mr. Vest?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
That's to say?
No. Yes, to say no, no is to say yes.
Our motion.
To deny.
To deny. Yeah.
No, I'm not for that.
Okay. Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Adair?
Yes.
Ms. Singer?
No.
Mr. Mifflin, the chair of OCS. All right. All right. The next item on our agenda is, again, a public hearing meeting.
I don't think so.
Maybe five minutes to let everybody clear.
Let's, we'll take a five-minute break here to let everybody clear, and anybody needs to go to rest. All right. We will call the planning commission back into order. And Mr. Jones? Where did he go?
Oh, he's behind.
We're going to make a quick change, real quick here. We're going to, the item on our other business, the multi-walking trails, villages at Falls Creek Phase 1. We need to vote on that to get Mr. Perkins out of here. So do we need?
Pass this back.
A presentation on that, or we heard it at the?
It's to the ultimate discretion. We've got slides to illustrate. No.
Maybe somebody can give us some quick synopsis.
How about 30 seconds? I'll give you 30 seconds. We've got $8,000 that we, remaining on a bond that was called. It's for multi-trails in and out of, what, 30 different lots? Something like that. Subdivision apparently doesn't want it. We can't build them for $8,000. There are lots of fences that go across the easement for it. Basically, we need to waive it and then return the money to the bank where we, and that clears up the credit and all that for this $8,000.
Otherwise, we'd have to come up with the remainder of the money to build it, and we don't have the money.
In effect, by saying we're going to do it. We have to. We're going to have to do it. And all we got's $8,000. We need to get that back.
And homeowners don't want it anyway.
And they don't want it anyway.
I'm going to make a motion that we relinquish the funds. Yes.
Steve Brookwicki, 136 Falls Creek Drive. I am the current president of the Village of Falls Creek Homeowner Association. We do not want the walking trails. I'll just make it official for you. We do not want them on the grounds of safety, liability, flooding, flooding maintenance, and overall, we just don't desire or need it.
Excuse me. Does your name begin, please, sir?
Brewicki. Bravo. Romeo. Uniform. Kilo.
I'll never come up with that.
B R. U K. W I. C K I. Steven, I'm signed in on the sign-in sheet.
Oh, you were, weren't you?
Yeah. 136 Falls Creek Drive. I'm the current president of the Village of Falls Creek Homeowner Association. We do not want the walking trails.
I'm going to make the motion that we return the money to the bank.
Yeah, we waived that requirement and returned the money.
Yes.
I have a motion. I'm looking for a second.
I haven't been sworn in. The money, do I need to be sworn in?
You swear.
It's going your way, Joe, you don't say it.
It's, I talked to the bank. The money doesn't come back to the bank. It comes back to me.
Okay.
But just want to clarify.
Whatever. We relinquish it.
You're going to share with us, right?
I need to, yeah. You don't get paid.
But they'll need to confirm that.
Yeah.
All right. I've got a motion by Ms. Singer. David Vest. Ms. Singer?
Yes.
Mr. Jesse?
Yes.
Mr. Vest?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Now, Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Adair?
Yes.
And the chair of OCS. Send that money back.
Thank you.
All right.
Now, Mr. Chairman?
Now.
May I go get ready for court in the morning now, please?
Go.
Thank you.
If we have any legal questions, Mr. Jones knows how to get away with it.
You've got my phone number.
All right. Again, this is a public hearing. So we.
So why do we need them at all, right? Do we ever need them?
This is a public hearing for ZMA 2025-32, Mulberry Street zoning map amendment from B1 Neighborhood Commercial to B3 Central Business District, located at Mulberry Street in Maine, in Stampin' Ground, Kentucky.
Yes. Good evening. My name is Mark Carper. I'm very pleased to present this application. There has been a bit of a shift, a couple different times in this application. When it first came to us, the proposal was to rezone from B1 to R1B, which would be from Neighborhood Commercial to Single Family Residential. We went to Technical Review Committee. We made a suggestion to the applicant that B3 might be a more appropriate zoning for this. The applicant is wanting to use property for residential purposes. B1 does not allow for residential purposes. B3 does. In regards to residential use for B3 zoning, which is the Central Business District, is a combination with a planned commercial or residential development. The applicant is wishing to do a single-family dwelling on this property, which is not permissible within the B1 or the B3. So they're going back to the original proposal of the R1B, which is the, the single-family residential. As mentioned earlier, about the unusual nature, providing no recommendation. I hate to do this again, but we are putting forth no recommendation. And I'll explain why on the next slide or so. This is the property. It is in Stampin' Ground. The property is one that's outlined in red. They can see the variety of zones around it. It's happened to be within B1. Much of Main Street is zoned B1. There are a few exceptions. You'll see, to the left of this particular image, there is one property along Main Street, which is zoned R1. Also, just to the south or the bottom end of this particular image, you'll see along Main Street, there's Zone R2 as well. Behind this particular property, there's zoned R1B. There's thought and some of the logic behind suggesting R1B could be continuance of that particular zone. What you see in this image as well, there's some R figures. And I utilized Google Street View and. View, and we were there recently, looked around, and those appear to be, to me, also residential properties. So the applicant is proposing to use that particular parcel, it's outlined in red, for residential purposes, and is wishing to rezone it as R1B. So just to make that clear. So it's been a bit of a shift. And this is in terms of the site itself, some things I'd like to make you aware of. It's a pretty small property. It's a little over 6,000 square feet, I think, a little under 6,100 square feet. Is that correct? Is that, it's about 1.4 acres. I think it's about 6,000 square feet. The dimensions, it's about 34 feet along Main Street and about 40 feet wide at the top of the property itself. It's 166 feet, I'm sorry, I can't read that print very well, but it's limited in size. So I want you to be aware of the configuration and the size and dimension of that particular property. This property has had a home before, and this image was provided to us by the applicant, and I believe this is following the tornado of 1974. Yeah, and so the property itself, I believe, is this one here, is that correct? Yes. Yeah, so it does show that there was a home there. So it's supposed to be a use that was in place previously, but currently is not, it's currently a vacant parcel. Okay, so the reason we're providing no recommendation is that you are faced with the choice this evening. As was mentioned before, the previous zoning map amendment application, there are legal considerations. Typically, we address how does the comprehensive plan propose use of that land, or how does the proposed use of that land or zoning that land fit within the goal of the comprehensive plan, the statements of the comprehensive plan? If a zoning application's been received and it does not fit within the scope of the comprehensive plan, there are alternative things to consider, and those are listed below. One is that the existing zoning classification given to the property is inappropriate and that the proposed zoning classification is appropriate. And B, that there have been major changes or an economic, physical, or social nature within the area involved which were not anticipated in the adopted comprehensive plan and which have substantially altered the basic character of such area. The staff report I had submitted was an argument or a recommendation for approval of zoning change to B3. So the staff report, you see, much of the information is geared toward that. I do have some of the information in the slideshow, but what I'm trying to do is present sort of these two perspectives, how the comprehensive plan may support the proposal to B3 or leading toward that kind of zone change. And the applicant has provided a letter, which I've given you guys copies of, arguing for, I think it's point A, that the existing zoning classification given to the property is inappropriate and that the proposed zoning classification is appropriate. And by the proposed zoning application, I do mean the R1B, the Single Family Residential. In regards to first item, the comprehensive plan, oftentimes we use future land use map to determine whether or not a zoning map amendment is appropriate. In this map, you see the purple, and you do see the red outline, that's the property that's being proposed to have changed. The future land use map indicates that this is desired to be mixed use. The comprehensive plan does define mixed use. The purpose is to provide a mixture of residential and commercial uses designed in a manner allowing the two uses to be mutually supportive. Comprehensive plan also identifies neighborhood centers, and this property is within the neighborhood center of Stampin' Ground. And these centers, they seek to achieve the following outcomes: to efficiently use the land available for development by combining higher-density residential, retail, restaurant, grocery, and public services into a compact area; to reduce motor vehicle miles driven to meet the daily needs of residents and traffic congestion through integrated uses and excellent bicycle business infrastructure; and to enhance the character of the built environment of the area through use of quality building materials and innovative architectural design. The comprehensive plan also lists a series of goals and strategies to achieve those goals. In regards to community form, goal, community form four focuses revitalized efforts in existing centers of activity. This includes investing in downtown Georgetown, Stateville, and Stampin' Ground as the heart of each city. It promotes multi-use and flex space, preserves and strengthens the fabric of existing neighborhoods by investing in maintenance improvements to infrastructure, requires infill and redevelopment projects to be designed for pedestrian use compatible with the existing character and long-term goals of the surrounding area. I might say that the applicant is also making an argument that infill requirements might be applicable to the alternative perspective on the zoning. And then lastly, the goal focused on renewal of our community and preservation of those places that make it unique. In regards to that second question, that the existing zoning is not appropriate for that use and should be rezoned separately, in terms of the standards for R1B, the permitted uses do include single-family dwellings. Conditional uses are listed there as well. The bulk standards for this in regards to setbacks and such are 35 feet from the side, 12 feet from the rear, the rear, and 20, sorry, 35 feet from the front, 12 feet from each side, and 25 feet from the rear. And I mentioned this in regards to placing a structure on there, it's gonna need to have variances to accommodate that structure most likely. Getting into sort of the arguments presented by the applicant, I do have them listed here, but certainly would invite the applicant to address these a little bit further. Just to summarize, the lot did have a house on it prior to 1974. Part of this lot is zoned R1B, not enough to build a house on it, though. The lot to the east is also single-family, as well as the lot directly south across the street. As this lot is empty, building a single-family house in this lot would align with the comprehensive plan for providing infill in areas of high walkability, which is one of the components of neighborhood centers. Using this existing lot to build a single-family home would help prevent another property out in the country, county, from being subdivided to meet this need. I don't know why I repeated that same statement again. I must have been subconsciously wanting to emphasize that, so I beg your pardon for the redundancy. Then lastly, that the property that I pointed out earlier, 3388 Main, was approved for zone change to R1, setting a precedent for rezoning approval for residential uses in the same B1 zoning district.
It looks like it might be a.
I beg your pardon?
Chat thing that did it for you.
What's that?
AI did it for you.
Oh, yeah, I, that's gonna be my default blame, that's gonna be my default scapegoat, So suitability, R1B zoning, again, that states that the existing zoning classification given to the property is inappropriate and that proposed zoning classification is appropriate. And here's that zoning map again. And regards to KRS 100.213, you must find that the map amendment is in agreement with adopted comprehensive plan, that was the first component. While residential use is a component of a mixed-use development, the exclusionary nature of the R1B zone may make any future mixed-use development more difficult to achieve. As such, staff feels that the proposed R1B zone or an alternative residential zone may fail to meet the requirements of this first portion of that state law. Therefore, the commission must determine whether the existing zoning classification given to the property is inappropriate and that the proposed zoning classification is appropriate. Again, the proposed zoning application is R1B. This time, staff makes no recommendation to the planning commission on this matter. This just sort of reiterates the two components and no recommendation. For approval, we do suggest the following condition, that they meet all zoning compliances and regulations. So, thank you, I'm here for questions?
I have a question for you.
Yes.
So this, America's gonna go back to the city of Stampin' Ground, right?
Stampin' Ground will have.
Regardless of what we do here, aren't they going to?
Yes, they will have the opportunity to comment on it, for sure.
Thank you.
I've got a question.
Yes.
So if we did approve this tonight, would that keep, like, somebody else from going out in the country and dividing up another lot?
Beg your pardon?
Yes.
I mean theoretically, it means.
He's speeding.
I didn't quite hear.
Essentially, it would be approving to build a house where a house used to exist.
All right. Does anybody need to hear from the, from the owner? Rob, do you have anything you need to say?
Rob Jones, so I own the property. This is just a little lot, we kinda got it on a trade deal, working it out with somebody else, so we thought, well, we're trying to build a little house for our son, give him a chance to have something to own. 30-year-olds, it's tough for them to get a house these days. So that's the reason we're trying to do this, is just give our son a house to live in, and it's close to mama, so that makes a big difference.
Keep her happy.
I've learned so much about this little piece of property, I never thought I'd learn. I didn't know this, but the oldest house in Scott County settled on that property. The oldest house in Scott County. Somebody asked me the other day if it ever been a business, I don't know, I ain't been around that long, but I don't guess so, since the oldest house in Scott County settled on that property, it's probably never been a business, so. So the B1 is, and David and I, we argue the same case, all the zoning in Stampin' Ground needs to be redone, we all know that, but.
Yeah.
I would like to invite my neighbor up here, he's, he's gonna be right next to, his property's right next to it, if he wants to come up and say something, maybe he might have something to say, so.
That's good to know. Yeah. Right, hey, I'm a property owner in 3357 Main Street. Originally came because I thought it was gonna be zoned business, but didn't want a business in my front yard, you know, was thinking about that. But I'm also concerned a little bit with the closeness of the property, of the size, in building a house on the property. There's not really much there, it's just, you look, you look out my bedroom window, the properties are out there. But those are, those are my main concerns tonight, about the closeness of the property. And I'd like to know, I know he told me he's building a house, but how it's gonna be built and see a plan on that.
That comes later. So are you for the zone change or against the zone change?
Well, I, for residential, I'd be for it, he can, but for business, no, but it's the original purpose I came here tonight.
You'd rather have a house there than a business here?
Yeah. I'm already getting a bar and grill in my driveway.
Yeah.
So I don't.
Maybe, if it ever opened.
They got the signs out.
We'll see.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir.
That is a tiny, tiny lot, tiny, tiny lot.
Tiny home, baby.
But, however, I'd like to let Stampin' Ground do Stampin' Ground business. I'd like Stampin' Ground to do Stampin' Ground business.
So the lot just north of it is owned, that house too? It's the same size, it's got a house on, it's been there before the tornado?
Then there was a house, yeah.
See, that's the deal, Stampin', that's, Stampin' Ground's got a lot of small lots.
And you need people there.
And they're all, no, we don't, but they got a lot, a lot of them are zoned wrong, and that's, this is, this is a prime example, in my opinion. I mean, I'd rather have a house there than a business also, I agree with it.
My property is zoned B1 as well as driven.
Yeah. See, my welding shop's zoned R1 and R2, so, yeah, anyway, I know.
You're there, there, when you are.
All right, any other discussion? I'll take a motion by someone.
We gotta come out of the public hearing.
Close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion for approval of ZMA 2025-32 zoning map amendment from B1 to R1B.
Okay.
And I'll second it.
Is that accurate?
That's correct. To clarify for the record.
If you would, make sure you include your findings for allowing that. The KRS 243, you'll just, I'm sorry, 213, you'll just want to basically, and I don't want to put words in your mouth.
That's all right, you can put them in there. The lawyer's gone, so you put them in there.
Uh-oh, there's one behind him there.
Ah, he don't work for us.
You need to, if, if it's your finding that the zone that Colonel is there is inappropriate and the R1B is appropriate, just include that, Section 1A in your findings.
Okay. Based off the finding that the existing zoning classification given to the property is inappropriate and that the proposed zoning classification is appropriate.
I'll self-second.
Okay. Ms. Singer?
Yes.
Mr. Jesse?
Yes.
Mr. Vest?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Adair?
Yes.
And Chair of all chairs. All right. The only other thing we have on the agenda is the findings from the RV workshop.
And this is just an information hearing, not decision-making?
Yeah, this is, there is no action, we can't take any action, can't take any vote on anything, as it was not advertised for such. So we will have at least one more get-together with you all, assuming that the next one is advertised for action.
Are you all having another public meeting on it?
It really depends, honestly. Kind of expected to see more people, but then maybe they just went home.
Yeah, they probably gave up.
So anyway, again, no, this is not protecting any action. There's been not a ton of substantial changes since the last minute, but I can go over, if you all have any questions, just stop me. I won't get too redundant.
The stuff in red is what's changed.
Ma'am?
The stuff in red is what's changed.
Yes, and there's a couple notes I've taken here as well that I didn't want to print out, a whole new draft, or email it out again, because it's really just minor stuff. And pretty well, everybody that's here this evening has seen this version as well. So anyway, I guess I'll just read it in for the record. Is that permissible? Okay.
We don't have an attorney, so I'd say yes.
Yeah, well, and at one time, I was sitting in Harold's seat next to Dan and James, and we told Matt Summers to go on seven different sessions in a row, so I feel for you. So anyway, the purpose statement here being that the Scott County does recognize the value of recreational opportunities, tourism, and diversified rural economies in unincorporated areas. And so, and just to mirror that in what comes next, the applicability statement, we do want to make it clear that this ordinance is specifically for the unincorporated areas of Scott County. This will have no action or no effect within city limits, that's our intention, as Holden and I discussed today. So when and if this does take action past you all, it'll be fiscal court only. So the city will have no ordinance per se, and so we won't have a use or a zone necessarily for any RV parks to go in city limits, so I just want to make that clear. At this point, this is just a matter for us in fiscal. And so again, the purpose here is to define and create standards specifically related to the development of RV parks or recreational vehicle campgrounds, here to known as RV parks. And then our following goals here being protect rural and neighborhood character in areas where parks are allowed, establish design standards that are context-sensitive, promote diversification of local economy, and allow for such facilities while protecting the public health and safety of the community. Pretty standard stuff there. And again, I spoke about applicability, there is just gonna be one little line item that I'd like to include that's not in your all's packet, it's in pen on mine. RV parks are defined land use in the Georgetown-Scott County zoning ordinance. These standards apply to all developments that meet such a definition, and here's where my pencil in is, in unincorporated Scott County. So that'll delineate us from county, city, multi-jurisdictional area. Only those lands with less than 50% collective prime farmlands and farmland of statewide importance may be considered for this use. I'll take a stop here because that's a part of the ordinance that has been discussed a little bit as far as clarity of terminology and all that, prime farmland, statewide importance, the ratio therein. Does anybody on the commission have any questions about that concept? Or any objection to it?
Have local farmers expressed opinions on this, and they're in favor of it?
Well, again, I'll rephrase that, I think there's a little bit of confusion depending on certain contexts on exactly what that means and how it should be applied and why it is applied. what that means and how it should be applied and why it is applied and what, within a parcel, constitutes this ratio. So again, we'll kind of use the loose reference of Rogers Gap. As you move south from there, shown on this screen here, anything that's in any shade of green is 40% or more of soils that constitute this designation. And again, it can be a little bit difficult because it's, that's a percentage of the overall parcel, right? So if somebody were to divide off the part that's 0% prime farmland or whatnot, that could be eligible, but if the parcel as a whole has a ratio, so again, pretty well anywhere south of Rogers Gap, et cetera, and Roy, you helped me with all that. I always look at you about, you know, the soils and things. So there's a lot of land in the southern parts of the county outside of city limits that would, at this time, essentially be ineligible in the interest of protecting our rural character and prime soils and farmlands, et cetera.
Brett, can I jump in for just a second?
Please do.
So just to clarify, the USDA provides a soil map that just blankets all of Scott County and then rates those soils and identifies, again, those prime farmlands. However, the map you are looking at here is based on our existing parcel data. And so what this parcel data basically did is took the average across the entirety of the acreage and then assigned it a color. So it is, it is possible, like Brett said, that when looking at a parcel as a whole, it could be over 50%, but there may be portions of it that are less than that. For our, I'm going to say sanity, we deal with parcels, and so we'd be assessing them based on the parcel's totals. If somebody wanted to subdivide off an acreage so to become eligible, I believe that would be preferable even, and that in doing that, you are separating the potential commercial use from the agriculturally-prime farmlands. And so as we move forward, just keep parcel data in mind, understanding that we can go as granular as the USDA maps provide.
And that would preserve more of the farmland, what you're saying?
Well, the intention of that 50% cutoff is to preserve those farmlands.
So why don't you have that on there on all, all, all of them?
All what?
Industrial. I mean, why are we, why don't we do that, like, just like the, the, we just seen tonight? You know, they're saying, well, that's farmland, you know, you want to save that, and they want to turn into a million-square-foot manufacturing facility, you know? Of course, that's back in the day, am I not right? That was a prime farm, right?
Yep. So I want to make a slight distinction here. In doing this, we are specific to unincorporated Scott County. The parcel that we looked at earlier today that was zoned industrial, that was in the urban service boundary. The urban service boundary is intended for urban-level developments. Outside of that, that's where our preservation mindset has to kick in.
You're saying if it's zoned A1...
Outside of that urban service boundary, yeah.
If it's zoned A1, you got to know if it meets the criteria that you have.
Past that, again, that, the existing ordinance related to A1R, which is a different conversation, it uses the language prevalent. It indicates that A1R, or what is that, agricultural/recreational-type developments shouldn't take place on those lands that have prime farmlands prevalent. Now, again, from an administrative perspective, prevalent is a very loose word, and your idea of prevalent could be different from your idea of prevalent. And so when we go from the overall zone, which is A1R, which would apply to several different uses, and look specifically at RV uses, we want it to be more specific. And so it's, it's similar language, but this is part of the conversation, even including that language of that 50% cutoff. The intent is obviously to preserve farmland, but there have been certain members of the community that expressed that that might be too high. There have been other people in the community who've expressed that that's way too low. And so that is, again, where it comes to the planning commission's discretion to figure out what reflects the value of the community as we write it today.
Do you mind sharing? I was interested, what percentage of people fall on both, where you've had all these meetings? Where do you think it lies? Percentage-wise? Is it equally divided, or...
Or is, as in, how many people are in support of...
That 50% versus wanting...
It's, it's pretty variable. Commissioner Jesse, I'll tell you why. There's a large percentage of the population that we've heard from that don't want any RV parks anywhere.
Well, that's not, yeah.
But that's, that's, that's...
But that's who showed up.
That's who showed up. And so 50%, not high enough. If you talk to people who are obviously, want to create RV parks, 50% is too high of a burden for them. And so what we're looking at is, again, how do we keep that comprehensive plan spirit of preserving our farmlands in place? So I don't, man, I'm not going to, with the engagement we've currently had, though, by numbers, I think there's more pushback against the creation of RV parks, in particular in the south side of Scott County, than there is otherwise, just to try not to dance around too much.
We got a solution to that.
Yes.
That, me and Brad was talking about that, where we both drew up farming. That should say "tillable" prime farmland.
Okay. That makes sense.
Sure. Okay. I don't know how to measure that, but...
Oh, yeah. You guys, they've got a...
Okay.
Tillable farmland, because if it's not tillable, you're not going to farm it, you're going to graze it or put RV park on it.
Brett, we got that one? All right. Brett's got a lot more?
Yeah, that'll be on those maps.
Well, yeah, I, I'll definitely take a look into that language. That's something I'm not familiar with, and because, and maybe that's kind of where some of the classification is here, because a lot of the classification is topography-dependent, too. So do you think maybe topography is playing into that tillable ability?
It's 100%, that is what...
So maybe, maybe that's where they shake hands. Okay, I like that. I like that.
So based on all this, I just want to make sure that we are, if it's design property, we are still going to allow to have RV parks here, correct?
The goal here is to create an ordinance that does allow for diversification of different activities, recreational activities, that make, that are context-sensitive, make sense for our community, that protect our community while also adding benefit. So yes.
I just want to make sure that we want to have a way...
Well, there would be no, if we, if...